All right, we'll go ahead and call tonight's planning and zoning meeting in order. I'd entertain a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we have an agenda. Item number three, approval of meeting minutes for the April twenty fifth, twenty twenty-three and the May ninth, twenty twenty-three. Any corrections?
I have just a couple corrections. On page eight, it's line forty-one. The word there, it says actualization, should actually say fractualization. So, Mr. Reader responded, he felt that there had been a fractalization of attitudes in the city. Writer, sorry about that mispronunciation. And then on page twelve, line twenty-nine. It should say Ms. Paulson presented pictures and stated she looked at this every day. It says he, referring to her. That's all I have for right now, and I'm sure Mr. Terry has a few.
I do. No minor.
We'll see if you see what I saw.
What's that?
We'll see if you see what I saw.
Okay. On page three, line twelve. It should be disapproved rather than approved, two of them. I think. Or, well, it's the way the sentence is structured, either the they could either be counsel. Or if it was us, then approved would work, but the way the sentence is constructed, it seems like we're talking about counsel and the disapproved. But actually, no, that can't be right though, because they didn't unanimously disapprove them. It was a three to two vote, so actually I think approved is correct, and we have to just identify that they. Or somehow restructure that sentence so that it's clear that.
And drop unanimously.
Because. Oh, I know how to change that. After, instead of because they, write after P and Z had unanimously approved two of them. I think that, make that sentence work. All right, then on page two. Line four, it should read, Terry stated to Berg that he would comment after the staff report. So we're adding to after the word stated, leaving out could make any, and changing that to that he would, and then comment rather than comments. And one more would be on page four, line three. Just need to pluralize perception of others instead of other. And that's all I got.
Yes, sir, yep, yep. I like this, I nitpick things, it's great. Page five, line thirty-five. I believe it was meant to say another chance versus change.
Yep.
And then page six, line thirty-six. As opposed to major roll block, it's meant to be roadblock. Lord knows we could go through and do this all night.
As it may open the future.
Yeah.
At least we read it.
Yeah.
Best of intentions. Any other corrections, anyone else sounds on it? Minutes? Randy, Joe?
Nope.
I submitted mine before the meeting. They were just what, basically what I said.
Okay. All right, well, hearing another other, I'll go ahead and call for the vote, all in favor of approving the minutes?
We need a motion.
Sorry, a motion, I'd entertain a motion to. It's been a long day.
I make a motion to approve the amended minutes.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None, carries. Thank you for putting up with me, it has been a very long day. All right, moving on to item number four, concept plan for Design Earth Contracting Inc. at one hundred eighty-seventh Lane Northeast at Ulysses Street Northeast.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, give me one second to get the location map lined up here for you. Not as close and as big as we're gonna get. Designing Earth Contracting, an existing East Bethel business, has submitted a concept plan application for the construction of a new nineteen thousand square foot office and shop space near the intersection of one hundred eighty-seventh Lane Northeast and Ulysses Street Northeast. The new building will consist of a seventy-five hundred square foot office building and an eleven hundred and fifty square foot shop, and over eighty thousand square feet of rear and side yard storage, exterior storage. The proposal includes a use of combination of precast concrete panels, glass, and brick. This property is owned industrial, light industrial, and Appendix A, Section forty-eight, subsection four permits construction service through conditional use permit. Additionally, exterior storage in the light industrial zone is also regulated by conditional use permit. The city staff is asking the planning commission to review the proposal and the concept plan and provide informal comments to the applicant in preparation for their submission for a conditional use permit and site plan approval. There are a number of items included in your packet, including the Section forty-eight under the light industrial zoning, Section twenty-four, four, under exterior storage, and Section twenty-eight, three, under the architectural standards for light industrial construction. I would point out that the design, the proposed design, is included in your packet. This is a rendering of the proposed design. As you can see, it's got a combination of glass, brick, and architectural concrete. This would be the corner view from Ulysses and one eighty-seventh. The next few pages in your packet are all the technical information. If you like all of that information, it's a, looks like it's all concrete and or brick panels with steel supports. And page. Fifty-one and fifty-two of your packet are the site plan. Which shows the. Location of the proposed building and the amount of exterior storage. And the reason I'm pointing out the exterior storage is in our current city code. The exterior storage for the light industrial area, although it is conditional use, is also limited to the, match the footprint of the existing building. Therefore, the. Concept plan proposal amount of storage could be included in the conditional use for storage to show the expansion, and or it could be limited based on the governing body's perception of what the existing code is. As you know, there are proposals and amendments to our current exterior storage that are circulating and that we'll discuss later tonight that show or amend for increased exterior storage. And the other thing I want to point out is that if you take a look at an aerial photo of the classic commercial park. You'll notice that a majority of the neighbors, if not all the neighbors, have exterior storage exceeding the existing footprint of their businesses. This would not be out of character in the neighborhood and would most likely be approved by conditional use for the amount of storage. The existing location of Designing Earth also has the same exterior storage capacity beyond the footprint of the business, so. These must have existed prior to the ordinance change, and they're essentially grandfathered in or existing non-conforming. However, again, I said we are in the process of amending the ordinance, or there are proposals to amend the ordinance which includes exterior storage. So having that for consideration. The applicant is here, if you have any questions. They did include a letter stating what their plan and goal was and objective was, that is in your packet. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, or we can have the applicant come up if you have some specific questions, but we're just looking for feedback so that they can apply for the conditional use permit as well as the conditional use for the storage for site plan approval and conditional use.
Thank you, Aaron. All right, well, I don't believe any motion is going to be necessary to start discussion, so if anybody's would like to start, I'll open the floor for the discussion on the item.
I have a question.
You look like you're ready?
Yeah, this back lot, question for Aaron or the.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Please.
We need a motion before we can start to discuss. Do we not?
This is just a feedback session, there's no formal action needed on this, this is informal.
I retract my point of order, thank you.
Nope.
Sorry, Joe.
Is the back lot going to be paved at all?
It's proposed to be gravel.
Gravel.
I don't know if in the future the applicant wants to pave or not, again, they are here, if they want to answer any questions.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind stepping to the podium and state your name and company address, just for the record. I'll put the podium and the microphone, please, just, no, it's all right, we're under recording, and it's extremely hard to hear anybody when they're not.
All right, good, good deal. Well, appreciate you guys' time, my name is Jesse Newman with Design Earth Contracting. Always Stephanie is here, we are the owners of Design Earth Contracting. Joe Raddick is our consultant, has been helping us go through the process and applications. We're currently located at one eight six five one Buchanan Street, East Bethel, Minnesota, five five zero one one. And as Aaron has mentioned, we currently reside on Buchanan Street, we've been in the industrial park for eighteen years, I think now. We were previously in the Shade Tree Building that was purchased by the bus company, then now is currently owned by Classic, and we moved over to the Merrimack Building. Two thousand ten, eleven? All the years blur together, somewhere around that time. So, the goal right now is we've continued to expand and grow the company, and we have basically outgrown our current location. So we were currently talking with Dave Pixley over at Second Generation Chimneys, kind of the old solder farm right there on a quarrying that property. But we chose to go more on the corner lot to have better access to the site and a little more visibility. I'm sure you guys have noticed with the building, we're not really sparing much money on the presence on that. We're kind of going, I think, in our opinion at least, above and beyond what the requirements are. The goal is to also maybe create some energy to have other development follow with us. I mean, obviously, progress has come and development's coming, and maybe we can be kind of an anchor to that development to encourage others to follow. We're bringing new architecture, more modern design, you know, to the area. We're trying to maybe elevate the bar a little bit with the site, so the goal for us is to obviously, you know, build and retain the company here. We're gonna continue to grow, we're gonna have more staffing come along, and to accommodate that demand that we have, we need to expand and relocate. So the location that we've chosen, you know, we feel is a very good fit for our team, for our clients, you know, we've been here, we're almost two decades now, that, you know, this industrial park. We do a lot of work with the neighbors, Shaw Trucking, Classic, when Landmark was in there. Obviously, Classics, you know, crushing spreads, so we kind of, you know, provide a lot of business to each other, kind of, you know, family friendly or neighbor friendly type deal, so we'd like to be able to continue that. You know, Shaw's our main truck broker, so, you know, we're always doing business with those guys daily, so it's kind of a good relationship that's been established for almost decades now. So, yeah, I don't know. To answer the question with the exterior paving right now, most likely would be gravel for the more of the larger area. Concrete aprons coming in, pavement areas for the parking, but we don't see gravel in an earth paving at this time, just due to the damage, and there's just no really good incentive for us to have that at the time.
I would assume the equipment that gets stored back there would be the main purpose of the damaging to the.
Correct, yeah, I mean, with the equipment that we utilize, they have steel tracks on them, so they would damage the blacktop, especially, you know, during the warm summer months. So we would end up probably doing more damage than good to the area. So gravel, we can obviously replenish that, maintain it, take care of it, you know, keep the yard presentable. So just, there's not a great incentive to go blacktop, if anything, we'd probably be taking a step backwards on it.
Jesse, I did talk with Joe, you guys intend on keeping this, if you look behind you here, my mouse is on that, you intend on keeping this driving lane open and accessible?
Correct.
And not actually storing anything on that area that's gonna be driving lane?
Be more on be the west perimeter and the south perimeter. We need to have flow of traffic, obviously, equipment to come out, trucks to come out daily, parking for our staff. So it's a little misleading that there's gonna be as much shown as outdoor storage, that's kind of a, you know, not entirely true, because you're gonna have on average a dozen to twenty vehicles parking back there for employees, we need flow of traffic, we need to be able to get in, we need to be able to get out. Machinery or trucks and whatnot be parked inside the building, so it's, you know, it's, I don't know how to answer it. It is outdoor storage, but it's not outdoor storage, if that makes kind of sense, you know, because there's flow, there's traffic, there's parking, it's kind of really a combination of all the above.
And the screening requirements in the light industrial zone would still be applicable to the storage area? So they would still be required to screen it from the right of way on both sides of the road, so that still exists.
That's exactly what I was just gonna ask, is what kind of fencing or screening do you have around the property then?
Right now, it'll be fully screened, most likely like a CMU style wall, where you won't be able to see visibly in there. A lot of neighbors, including our current place, just have vinyl fencing or the inserts right on the slacks. I think we're gonna try to doll up a little bit more, you know, being on the corner out there with the new gas station coming in. We're looking at more of a kind of fancier design. We're still working on the details on how to achieve that, because once you start getting ornamental fencing and whatnot, it's kind of hard to do the privacy, so we'll definitely meet the minimums, but I'm pretty confident that we're gonna exceed them.
What do you feel about dust control with the machines coming in and out with the gravel and the fencing, would it be, you think it would stay fairly contained in the yard versus, you mentioned like the new gas station, obviously. You know, as a city, we love that they're gonna be using water and, you know, washing cars, but we don't need to give them an extra reason for it either.
You know, I think we've been here for, like I said, almost two decades, and I don't think we've ever had a complaint about our operations, so historically saying, I would feel like that we've been beyond compliant, you know, if not, please let us know, but we've never had anyone call us, I guess. So, I mean, if there was an issue, please let us know, but I think we're pretty.
Well, there's ways to treat that too, I just wanted to know if it ever had been an issue for you in the past.
No, it hasn't.
Okay.
No.
And as you guys can see from the rendering, that's a pretty substantial chunk of the corner.
Yeah.
The proposed storage will be to the south and west of this building. So from the right of way, you're gonna mostly see building. And then what you don't see will be screened from the right of way as well, from Ulysses as well as one hundred eighty-seventh. I suppose with the exception of a gate, if the gate is open during the daytime or something, but.
Yeah.
So as I said in my presentation, I don't think this is completely out of character from the rest of the neighborhood, it's an industrial park, if you will.
And your business is excavating?
Correct, yeah, excavating like segregating utilities.
So you'll be able to maintain your lot pretty easily?
Yeah, I'm pretty confident we're probably one of the better looking ones in the neighborhood.
Do you have anything besides the vehicles that'll be stored there, like any materials, concrete piping or other things?
You know, occasionally we might have a little overflow with some pipe, but it's really minimal, you know, all materials stay on sites, you know, predominantly. Sometimes we might have maybe a little surplus of concrete bags or something like that might come back, but we, if there's materials at the shop, it's kind of goes against our efficiency. So it, we're not really a supplier per se, you know, so all of our materials are always direct shipped to the sites. So we don't really store anything that we keep at the yard is more for service use, you know, it's something that we use to do our scope of work. So we're not into supplying materials or handling materials, or we're not trying to bring extra sand or extra rock or concrete piles or anything like that, that's kind of a little different than the neighbors down the road, where they have materials on site, we do not have materials on site.
That's a big building. And is it gonna be just your business in there, or will you be subletting out to?
It'll be just for ourselves.
Are a majority of your employees local, or do they come from out of town?
All the above.
Yeah.
You know, we live just a couple miles away, we got guys that live five miles away, guys that live sixty-five miles away.
How many employees do you have currently?
A little over thirty.
And your plan with this building is to increase by, how much do you project?
You know, that's the million dollar question.
Yeah.
Obviously, it depends on market demand, industrial use. You, when we first moved in, we're business of eight, you know, so we've tripled, we're also seasonal, so during high season, we can be up to fifty, sixty employees, you know, during winter time, so slower, so that's obviously, you know, with them traveling in the shop. You know, I think, you know, the gas station that's surrounding neighborhoods, you know, benefit from the staff that we have that comes in and raises the sale. But, um, so, yeah, it's all walks of life, between employees, vendors, people selling us materials, coming through, you know, giving us our sales pitch, whatnot, I mean, it's, the front door's always open and swinging. But I can't give you projections, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
If I knew that, I wouldn't be in this business.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything for Jesse, will I stand in here?
I do have another question, so obviously the square footage of your storage, so to speak, you don't harbor a lot of materials, but one of the things that we're looking at here, and some of the ordinance amendments are gonna be as far as height is concerned for storage. Now, I'm sure a lot of the machines that you have, you know, they probably got arms on them that are gonna stick up higher, but in your flow of materials, do you anticipate? um, in your flow of materials, do you anticipate that a twelve-foot height or any height restriction on storage? Would that be a hindrance to you?
I don't really believe so.
Sure.
I mean, maybe if an excavator's parked with the arm upright, but that's probably right around that
Yeah.
mark.
Yeah.
But again, we're not really into material stores.
Sure.
It, it's more equipment, hardware, stuff that we can either turn a key on or utilize somehow or another.
Yeah, yeah. That was more of a question from my knowledge.
To, to help clarify that, uh, in our code, in the zoning code, um, construction yards are exempt from exterior storage requirements as outlined in section twenty-four four A, which is um maximum height is one of the things that it, it uh exempts it from.
Perfect.
Um, it does, it exempts it from let's see, exterior storage should be limited to the rear yard and shall be allowed within required setbacks or public right-of-way. Uh, maximum amount of exterior storage cannot exceed the square footage of the building, uh, and twelve feet in height. So, those are the, in the section. But it does say that, uh, provided they're all located in the rear yard of the principal building. So, there's, there's our dilemma. Our code says that it can't be in the side yard. So, under conditional use can be allowed, the storage could be allowed.
It's great to get some feedback, too.
Yes.
On that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, appreciate it. And I wish you luck, that's a huge step for you.
Yeah, no, we're excited about it. I mean, it's been years in the making and now we're kinda bringing it to light and, you know, it just uh allows us to stay in the area and continue to move and grow on and, you know, establish further roots. So, yeah, appreciate your time.
Yeah, I wanted to say, I appreciate your architectural approach, rather than what's so many do is to try and do the minimum thing to get by, you're trying to up the game and set a standard. Right, I like that.
Yeah, no, appreciate that, I mean, that was definitely a goal of ours, is we go there every day. You know, my wife Stephanie's in there every day along with the staff and, you know, it's kinda like our personal home and a, you know, uh, in a way for us, so we just thought if we raised the bar a little bit, others will follow, we hope. And if they don't, then we'll be proud of the place we built and hopefully you guys can be too.
I think it's a beautiful building.
Thank you.
Um, so I guess in our next discussion, it's gonna be about um, a change to an ordinance with um, tilt-up concrete panels. Uh, since you kind of have experience now, um, do you mind telling us, like uh, was that less expensive than doing like brick and, brick and mortar, or? I think it's a beautiful building, so.
Yeah, you know, we explored kinda the options. The, by going pre-cast, was actually more expensive for us on this particular building, you know, given the footprint. Um, you see more larger concrete tilt-up panels on larger warehouse sites. And some of them can be pretty boring, obviously, so, you know, our goal was to, we utilize the panels for energy values. Um, so we get better R ratings out of that, so we'll have better energy efficiency. You know, so obviously, our gas usage, our electrical usage will be less. So, that was one incentive for us to go the additional kind of funds for it. The other reason why we did it too is we're allowed to go higher, you know, with having the second mezzanine floor on this one. We, you know, we went with higher uh ceiling clearances inside of there. And we're also able to incorporate more materials. So, if you go with the traditional rock face block, you're kinda hostage to only that material. Where with us, you can, oh, we had a picture of, but you can see we did story glass all the way through it, we have brick on it. We have the pre-cast walls with scorches colors, multiple colors to it. So, we've really tried to doll it up to kinda more of today's standards and to really kinda take it to the next level. So, by doing this, we have the recessed panels, we've had depth, CMU walls, we couldn't do the depth. If you look where the, the window is there adjacent to the office, that's a recess, we have three D depths to it, we've added more character to the building. So, um, you know, the answer is, we actually pretty much took the most expensive option on this. So, we've been kinda butting heads a little bit about it, um, with the cost, but at the same time, you know, we're pretty proud of the, you know, the finished product.
My question is, can you promise blue sky every day?
Yeah, always in July, we're good.
Well, I'll echo the statement, yeah, very beautiful building, well put together, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for that and for considering the city and, and wanting to step.
Well, appreciate that.
Okay.
Good, thank you. Thank you.
Any final comments for me that I can forward back to them, uh, or is everyone comfortable with what's been proposed? And we can let them move forward with a conditional use permit application and site plan review?
Yeah, very comfortable.
Yeah. Yeah, this body looks to be in favor of it.
Very good. Everything you need, Joe?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks for coming, guys. Look forward to seeing you guys in the next round.
What's that?
We'll see you in the next round. Look forward to seeing what you can bring.
We have a vacation tomorrow?
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you guys for your time, appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck. Alright. Yeah, with that, moving on to item five, zoning code amendments. Give me one second to shuffle here again?
Yeah, certainly.
You went front and back on these, good choice.
Alright, as you know, in the April third, twenty twenty-three council meeting, Councilmember Smith and Miller recommended amendments to various codes which are contained in the zoning code. Council directed staff to route the amendments to the Planning Commission for Public Hearing and Recommendation. At the January twenty-fifth, or excuse me, the April twenty-fifth meeting. Um, Planning Commission discussed these items after holding a public hearing. Due to the mixed levels of support and the limited amount of time for discussion for the proposed revisions, staff thought it was in the best interest to bring two of the zoning code amendments back for further discussion and a formal recommendation. Uh, one of the two left over for discussion tonight was reviewed by the East Bethel Economic Development Authority. And uh, their review was provided in your packet. Um, did everyone have a chance to read it, or would you like me to read it?
Can I read it?
I read it.
Okay.
This is the one with the um, the orange lining?
Nope, this would be um dated May.
Page sixty-nine, I think?
Page sixty-nine, yep.
Thank you.
Would be the Economic Development Authority's
Yes.
review and recommendation for the architectural standards, um zoning section twenty-eight, which we will talk about. Since we're on that one, I don't know if we wanna take, just take these out of order and go with that one first and then come back, or if we wanna go twenty-four, then twenty-eight? The uh, the last few pages in your packet are what was provided from the council members in the format in which they were provided. Is anybody opposed to hearing the EDA's thoughts before we go into our discussion on it, or? Or anybody need further review of it?
Uh, it might be good for the record.
Sure, okay. Uh, at the request of EDA member Brian Bazanson and the recommendation of the City Council, the East Bethel EDA reviewed the City Ordinance Architectural Standards, Appendix A, Zoning, Section Twenty-eight at their May fifteen, twenty twenty-three meeting for the purpose of providing comments to the Planning Commission as to the impacts of the ordinance amendment could have on economic development and marketing efforts in the city. The EDA reviewed the summary of propos- points of the proposed amendment, which are allow painted steel siding as an exterior finish for new construction. Eliminate the requirement of four-sided architecture, particularly on sides and rear of building walls. Combine the building design requirements for the B-two and B-three zoning districts into one section. Allow for architectural enhanced pre-cast and cast-in-place panels. Change the standard for the percentage of glass required for the front building wall. Remove the prohibition of post-frame pole building construction in the B-two and B-three and light industrial zones. Create separate sections for mixed-use, B-one and non-residential uses in residential districts, B-two, B-three and light industrial. The focus of the discussion was what should be removed or modified. The focus of the discussion was what should be removed or modified, not on the details of the draft language or combination creation of ordinance sections. The discussion attempted to compare the proposal for the change to existing ordinances and what could be the resulting impacts of an ordinance revision to this section. While the EDA feels there is a place for post-frame buildings, they didn't, did not have concerns allowing concerns regarding allowing these type of structures in areas served by city utilities. But they did have concerns, excuse me. Their issues were the visual impressions these type of buildings would have in areas like the classic commercial park. Future development between two hundred and fifth and two twenty-first and two thirty-seventh to two forty-first avenue segments of Highway sixty-five. The architectural compatibility needed to, needed to preserve property values for existing business and investments of new prospects. And ensure the overall attractiveness of these areas to sustain the environment that exists, existing businesses choose for their location and preserve the appeal of these areas for new business sites. Based on the EDA's experience with business development, the authority requested that the Planning Commission consider recommendations regarding changes to city ordinance architectural standards, Appendix A, Zoning, Section Twenty-eight. The proposed changes to the ordinance in their entirety would have a negative impact on economic development in the city, as it would alter the original intentions behind the purpose of architect, of the architectural standards. These standards were adopted to promote and create attractive and cohesive commercial slash industrial zones that protect property values and investments and become locations that are compatible with and complimentary of their business neighbors. Should the proposed changes be approved and included, include those areas served by city utilities, we anticipate that property values could decrease and new businesses that residents favor would be reluctant to move to the city and invest the capital that would provide more services, broaden the tax base and increase the employment opportunities in these zoning areas. The EDA recommends that this matter the EDA recommends that this is a matter that needs further review to prevent any unintended consequences of the ordinance changes. They feel that the options to consider would be the opt, the, excuse me, they feel that the options to consider could include, but not be limited to ensuring the painted steel siding is further defined and has design elements that provide, provides an acceptable finished feature. Where permitted, designate areas outside of those served by city utilities with zoning changes or zoning text amendments that would allow this type of building construction. Allow this type of use in areas that are compatible with, compatible with surrounding properties and similar to the predominant style of construction of this type of building. Where permitted, developing architectural standards for post-frame buildings. Continuing discussions to make certain that the secondary effects of this change do not have a negative influence on commercial light industrial development in the city. The EDA had no specific recommendations regarding four-sided architecture. Enhance pre-cast panels as exterior finishes, percentage of glass for the front of building walls or the ordinance changes for combinations or separations in the code section. So, again, the last uh seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five and seventy-six, seventy-seven are the changes that were presented as amendments. The last few pages were what was provided to staff. And then the redline version that you guys reviewed uh, last month was how I, uh, when I sat down with Mr. Smith and Mr. Miller interpreted their intentions on the information that was provided. So, I don't know if you wanna separate, separate those sections for discussion. My versions are what would comply with or be in orientation with the current way our code is set up. The items that were provided, the last few pages are in a format that isn't necessarily the same format as our city, current city code. So, whichever way is more understandable for you, and if you guys wanna go line by line, or however you want to take a look at those, um.
Okay, so I am a little bit confused yet on, so pages seventy-two to seventy-seven or seventy-eight, if there's that one. That is what Miller and Smith sat down with you after discussions?
This was what, the amendment that was proposed, the original amendment that was proposed.
Okay, and then the other pages, like sixty-five through sixty-eight?
Are what I took from their proposed changes and set it to the format that current code is, so that it if, if those proposal, if the proposal was approved, it would align with our current code. Number, format, letter format, paragraph style, those kinda things, so.
So, those pages are basically the same, but yours is just formatted in?
The information's the same, it's just in a different format, correct. Thank you for all that here. So, the uh, page sixty-five, if you wanna turn to that in your packet, would be the proposed changes to the architectural standards that were proposed by Councilman Miller and Councilman Smith, but in, in the format of our current code. So, what Relized from your further conversation with them after the last meeting. So, whatever is redlined is the changes that were proposed. Whatever is in red are the proposed changes to what was lined out, if that makes sense. So, if you look at uh, purpose number one at the top of the page, you see number two, mixed uses, that whole line is scratched out. That was just lined out in their proposal. So, I just took the code, whatever they lined out, lined it out in red, whatever additions or amendments they did, went in red. So, you'll see the current code along with the proposed amendments and or lineouts in, in my version.
So, from what I understand about what the uh, the EDA put forward to us, it talks about their summary of essentially the changes. These are accurate in line with what the proposals are, so, I mean, do we want to address them like that as far as um the summarized versions of the changes, so that it's easier to break down?
Certainly can.
Go at them one by one?
Certainly can, if that's the will of the group. Anybody opposed to that?
No.
That process? Randy? You're good with that?
Sure.
Okay. Alright, well, let's go ahead and dig in.
Should we make a motion?
Waiting for that. Go ahead, I'll entertain a motion to start discussion or review to hopefully come to a conclusion and a recommend, a formal recommendation to City Council.
So moved?
All second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are in discussion. Starting at the top then.
So, if, if we go, yeah, with the allow painted steel siding as an exterior finish for the new construction, and then you look at the EDA's objection, or at least their um, concerns with it, it looks like they would like to see that more defined. You know, that seems pretty um, pretty broad when they're talking about just painted steel siding. Um, am I interpreting that correctly, as far as what they wanna do with it, what they wanna see come out of the ordinance change?
So, I think if you look at, excuse me, if you look at page seventy-two, um, the summary of changes on page seventy-two, that was Councilman Miller and or Smith's proposal. I, I believe if you look at it, the EDA just reviewed those summary, that summary right there. That looks very familiar to me.
Yeah. I agree.
I think the, from what I understand, the worry was that pole, pole barns are gonna get built in the commercial district. And then um, I didn't get to see the pictures that Councilman Miller was sharing yesterday, except from distance. Um, but it looked like he had other But it looked like he had other ideas around what type of post-frame buildings that he wanted to allow.
Are those definable in a standard so that it's not misinterpreted by someone that wants to do the inappropriate version?
And that's, I think.
And that's part of the issue is again, once you open it up, what are you opening it up for? And although things can happen with the best intent.
Right, but there may be some technical distinction that can be made in these in the ordinance that would allow one prohibit the other.
I I do have a proposal if you guys want me to simplify things. Okay, in the in the current code. And I don't know which one it is. Here we go. Page sixty-six. If you look at what is C. Let's go, what was three B, what was lined out, it was three B. Says industrial properties located within thirteen hundred and twenty feet of the center line of the right of way of highway sixty-five. Shall meet the following architectural standards. And then it talks about if a portion of that property is located in that distance, then the whole thing is covered in that. So thirteen hundred and twenty square feet is a quarter of a mile. So if if you, for instance, wanted to maintain an architectural standard. A quarter of a mile from the center line of highway sixty-five and then allow for. An amendment to or a change to the architectural standards outside of the quarter of a mile. Then you would still maintain a higher standard in the highway sixty-five corridor for at least a quarter mile on each side of the center line. And that would allow for a lighter standard outside of a quarter mile. So if you want to start up business.
That's prime real estate.
If you want to start up business or something outside of a quarter mile and work your way into. The commercial industrial park and step up your architectural standard after you generate some employees such as designing earth and you want to move then to. The highway sixty-five side and you've upped your game and you've got more revenue coming in and you can afford something with a little higher standard. That would be easily definable in the code without making a ton of changes. We could change literally one or two lines and make that happen.
By putting that back in.
By by just simply stating that. That these architectural standards here are a requirement of anything thirteen hundred and twenty feet. From the center line of highway sixty-five. And we could. Lighten up the architectural standards for anything outside of that distance and allow for post-frame construction, standard concrete panels. Adorned this siding of a different cup, like you could make all kinds of changes that you want outside that quarter mile. That would simplify all of this. The other potential simplification would be that anything, as I think the EDA recommended serviced by sewer and water. Hold one standard and anything that's not serviced by sewer and water could be a different standard. That would then isolate where we have sewer and water, the commercial park or the most desirable properties at this point for anybody coming in from out of town. That probably can afford a higher value lot, because let's be honest, uh. Someone with a startup, maybe a construction company that doesn't have a lot of employees might not be able to afford the lot south of the movie theater. But they might be able to afford something a half a mile off. That's a little more reasonable until they establish a bank of employees and start bringing in revenue and are able to. Then move up to highway sixty-five. So just some ideas that I've kicked around as. Potentials without trying to pick this apart line by line by line. Where you could still provide opportunity for people with businesses or people that want to start businesses or provide opportunity for. Lessening standards to allow for people to come to town, but yet maintain a. Higher standard for a higher desirable client, if you will, or a higher desirable business to come to town. So just some food for thought.
Could that be caught as like a mixed use district exemption or requirement? Would that be possible or would we have to create a new zone?
We'd have to rezone everything that's, you know, a quarter of a mile outside of sixty-five as mixed use. I think we want to avoid if at all possible, opening up the zoning map for rezoning. And or comprehensive plan changes. I think that's going to get real muddy, but if we can just change the text. In the the zoning code to something along the lines of. You know, these standards don't apply to anything outside of thirteen hundred and twenty feet of the center line of highway sixty-five, either east or west. We can then add an amendment to the zoning code, which then includes standards. Lighter standards for anything outside of that quarter of a mile. Then you can name whatever you want for construction materials, whatever you want for percentages of glass, whatever you want for siding, whatever you like.
Yeah, without having to change.
Without having to change the entire zoning code to accomplish something that we could accomplish in a couple of lines potentially.
Which could also, because by changing everything in the zoning code would all could also change how the. How we're looked at come come plan time, we might not be in alignment with what our agreements are with with Minnesota.
I think your second example is a better fit in that it's not everything on sixty-five needs to be to that standard. There are some properties where that I don't think that would apply, but the city sewer and water ones. It zeroes in on those that are in particular holding that standard.
Yeah, and the my proposal is just two ideas that would, I mean, I I'd like to simplify this as much as possible, make the least amount of work for myself. But yet make sense and accomplish what the city council has in mind as far as changing things to open the door, if you will, to. More business to come to town or make it easier for people to put something up or use something or do something. And accomplish it in the same form, but yet the simplest way possible.
Well, I'm going to defer to your judgment a little bit more on that since you've also sat down with council members who originally did and you have a better idea of their intent. Based on their conversations.
Because then that change wouldn't limit it to the commercial zone or the light industrial zone or the mixed use zone. It would be anything a quarter mile. Whatever the zone is a quarter mile on the outside of that. Whether it's a commercial highway, commercial, light, industrial, mixed use, could have a different standard.
Based on it's.
Based on its geographic location from the center line of highway sixty-five.
So a rural business would have to be outside that quarter mile. So maybe behind Dollar General. Or small gas engine shop, there's two empty cul-de-sacs. Those would be.
They'd be close.
Let me pull up a map.
I was just going to ask you, Aaron, you have a zoning map available?
I will pull up a map here. You'll see it's definitely, there's definitely a color differentiation when you reach that thirteen twenty. And I, that's obviously done for. Planning purposes, but. So my assumption would be that thirteen twenty is right here. And right here.
It's not that, I mean, a quarter mile sounds far, it's not that far off.
Not that far actually.
Right, and for instance, our property goes.
That's actually half a mile, so quarter miles right here. So maybe your first two blocks off of sixty-five, east and west would be quarter mile.
To me, that makes more sense on the west side, but less sense on the east side where there's there's the standard is lower architecturally currently.
Right now.
Right, so I don't know, that would limit the opportunity for a business to come in. That would be compatible with what's there on that side and only allow the ones that want the higher architectural standard to be. Able to develop on that side.
But the, you're, yeah, you're talking on the east side of sixty-five there in the red, the red area.
Maroon strip, whatever color that is down there, those are all, yeah, but above that.
Yeah, this. This is a mixed use zone, which has completely different standards than our industrial and our commercial. So there's a lot of flexibility here actually. As opposed to right across the property line here, it's a completely different standard.
Right, and what I'm saying is to the left of that divide, that diagonal divide, no, we're back right where you were.
Between the mixed use and the.
Sixty-five, the applies recycling, et cetera.
Yeah, those, I don't see a business going in that would meet the same standards as across the road.
And the beauty of it right now is it doesn't have to meet the standard because it exists in a non-conforming fashion. So they'd be able to repair or potentially upgrade a little bit. They wouldn't be able to demolish and then rebuild. To the current, to this standard, they would have to then.
Upgrade to the current.
Current standard. So the existing buildings that are there, and I don't, to your point, I don't see an empty lot there to be built on anyway. So something would have to be tore down to be rebuilt.
To be held to the new, whatever new.
Held to whatever new standard or the standard that's on the books at the time.
Right, but say that somebody does want to take one of those lots and reconfigure it to a different business. They're kind of stuck, or it's not really a good option for them if they're held to that high of a standard. Which would not be, again, fitting in with everything else that's there.
Wouldn't the purpose be to continue to upgrade the the look off the highway?
That would be nice, yes, but in reality, is that? Is that going to help or prevent other businesses from utilizing those sites?
So here's here's one oversight that I think. Needs to also be brought to light is that. We could permit post-frame construction. But then you could also limit to what the exterior finishes of post-frame construction to make it a higher standard. If you want to see cement, stucco, concrete, brick on the front of something that's post-frame, that can also be accomplished. And then the back three sides of it could be steel siding, could be vertical panels, could be whatever. You could. You could technically create a post-frame building and then finish the outside and you'd never probably know that it's a post-frame building. You're going to spend a lot more money trying to make it look like it isn't a post-frame building to try and meet some standards, but if money was. Not a limiting factor. You could make a post-frame building look like a stick frame or a steel girder building or whatever, just how you finish the outside.
So it would have to be a quarter mile all the way up, not just in the water district?
Well, we can define it how, I mean, we can propose whatever recommendations you want. I just decided to draw that as a line because that's easy for me to make a text change in the zoning code. To allow for anything outside of thirteen twenty to be a different standard.
Versus saying thirteen twenty northbound from, you know, up to two hundred and eight and then picking up again at.
It does become convoluted, but you could, I mean, you could limit it, but then what happens if? Down the road sewer and water comes in and you've limited it to only sewer and water district. Now things need to change because the sewer and water expands. So like, I don't know if that's necessarily a great.
Yeah, you lose some uniformity going, going through the city, which is the intent of the architectural standards in the first place.
I mean, thirteen hundred and twenty square, linear feet doesn't change. I mean, you're either in or you're out. And then if that's the case, then you need to look at what you want to change in the area outside of a thirteen twenty. What allowable features would you want outside of that area? If you're if you're set, if your feelings are set that you want to maintain a. Corridor of sorts. But again, it's just food for thought. You you guys are making the recommendation here. I'm just.
No, but the context is appreciated. Again, you you deal with it on a daily basis. We we all don't, so again, it is appreciated.
If you look at the classic park here, as we looked at where designing earth is going. Like they would be within the thirteen twenty, right? Some of these are actually probably post-frame buildings back here. That existed prior to something. You might drive by and see brick on the front. These are also serviced by sewer and water.
Could you go north to the next intersection?
Viking or?
Viking would be the next one.
Not Viking, it's two hundred and thirty-seventh, I think.
Oh, that's way.
Excuse me.
Sims?
Sims.
So this would be your thirteen twenty, probably, your quarter mile.
So that is that thirty-seven acre property down in the south or?
Yeah, those are, those squares are forties. Basically.
Is there something specific there that that you feel would?
Boatworld's lot's pretty full now, so he's going to expand. Where is he going to expand to? What are? Would he be forced to build a conforming building with these same standards?
So the solution for Boatworld, if I may, is stackable storage. If he can put pontoons on top of another one, three high and exceed the twelve feet in height, which is a proposed change. He could essentially line up three times the inventory and have it in three rows alongside of his buildings like you see in Forest Lake or. Along highway thirty-five there. That is a potential solution for his location. He wouldn't have to move. He might not have to change anything. He's going to have some expense on. Building the racking and maybe a little bit larger forklift, but that would solve his problem.
And those two cul-de-sacs to to the south of that?
Uh, here.
So those require the, those can have.
Architectural standards.
Those potentially could, yes. If that's the direction. The ordinance ultimately lands, yes. And I think from that existing standard that's out there, I think the small engine and.
Dollar general.
Uh, Dollar General already meet that standard. I don't know if you're gonna necessarily get someone to come in next to it that. Even can afford that lot at this point, but. I can't say, I mean, people, you know, have aspirations and want to do things and and they can do what they want with their money as well, so.
If I remember right, when those, when we talked about those lots, like six months ago or so, when it was before us, there was. Handful of residents on the other side that were all curious about what what that potentially could look like outside. Outside their back door as well, you know, that's we have to be consider the residents and what they're looking at as well.
I do believe the property owners here are trying to sell this off as one. Block, they've marketed it that way, they've tried to auction it that way. They're they're hoping to to sell it off as one unit, so. I get calls every now and again. On that, but.
I mean, if the if the intent is to give, you know, give some greater flexibility, you know, like I'm not, I'm not opposed to that by any means, but. Uh, you know, I I've made it no secret, I again, I do think there should be some architectural standards, especially off our. Off our, you know, our face plate, for lack of a better term, coming up through the city. Uh, I think we've all seen a number of different cities do a number of different things and a little bit of uniformity, I think, was a long way as opposed to. You know, radical differences from building to building next to each other. I think it's just a, maybe it's more of a professionalism piece to it, but I think it, again, it helps with that property value. It helps with the look, the feel. I think it's also more inviting to consumers and customers.
And new businesses, I think. I for one agree that I I think it'd be a good idea to to keep those standards tight a quarter mile. And and to not allow the pole buildings in that area especially.
Steel sided pole buildings or just all pole buildings?
Well, I think that most pole pole buildings are steel sided, aren't they?
Not quite sure about that. I've seen apartment buildings with with laminated post-frames. So they are pole buildings, but then they're architecturally engineered to be larger. President Lux was talking about a building during the EDA meeting. She said that one of her buildings was a post-frame building. It looked really good.
And I don't doubt that there that there aren't, that that some look good, but I think kind of going back to Glenn's point earlier on is. And and I guess that something else I've always talked about too is, you know, precedent, you know, what do you create with? And, and I guess that something else I've always talked about too is, you know, precedent, you know, what do you create with that when you open things up, so. Again, going into things with, with the best intentions is always the, the right way to go. Uh, but we do have to be careful again about what you allow, because again, there's. Although we hope everyone goes into things with the best intention, sometimes again, financial piece comes into a cost and then, once you allow them. You know, say, okay, here's your box that you can fit in, or here's the rules and the guidelines you can buy by. Someone comes in and goes, cool, I hit the minimums, check the boxes. Sorry, you can't stop me. I own it. I can do what I want. And that's, and they're not wrong in that. So that's, that's part of this body, you know, I'm grateful for the E D A for taking the time to look at it and. And, and share their thoughts and obviously it's gonna be, you know, an absolute decision in the end, uh, but. But I think we do have to be a little bit careful and a little bit respectful, uh, you know, to our city and our residents about what we're. What we're doing here and, you know, again, just be careful when we're changing things, because again, we don't always. Know the repercussions in the end or, you know, even with going into it with the best intent.
I think I'm in favor, at least if, if it's not that thirteen twenty-foot standard something, I, I think that is. Very basic, very simple, um, versus splitting it between city sewer and water. Um, but then, you know, I can't, I can't imagine watching, you know, the Design Earth building go up. And then just south of, uh, East Bethel Imagine comes up this big, you know, pole building with just painted steel. You know, I mean, it might look nice at first, but yeah, there, there's two entirely different characteristics there. And we're trying to, as the face plate, paint a nice picture of East Bethel. So I'm, I'm in favor of having standards, you know, and then, you know, outside of that, um, you know. Let go of the reins a little, you know, still with standards, but.
Randy, you're hopefully quiet. Any opinions, thoughts?
Well, we're, we're, we're talking about reducing the corridor from a half mile down to a quarter mile.
For the standards.
Yes, for the standards. But I just, I'm thinking about all the places in the city that are. Like right on that half mile or just beyond the half mile. Of where someone could potentially put up a pole building. Where it may not, we may not want that to be an option.
Can I just interject on that? Um, Blue Ribbon Pines Disco, of course, would be a good example of that, cause they are just. Half mile up, because they butt back to our properties, ours is a half mile. So if you're thinking. You know, the, I, I think there's probably a pole building back there. You don't see it from the highway, but anyways, again, I just wanna give you some reference on, example of that.
Right, so I'll, I'll give you another one. The senior center that was just opened up, you know, down in the water district. Someone could buy the property that's right across the street, which is right next to the church. And they could put up a pole, pole building and, you know. Church probably wouldn't want them to sell to somebody who's gonna do that, but the point is.
You're saying if we drop this, these standards?
If you, if you drop the standards, yes. Then they could put up a pole building with, that may not look as what we are protecting currently. That would really be kind of an eyesore, you know, right across the street from, from there, or.
How far do you think they are?
Just, just a moment, please, let me, let me finish. We also talk about, you know, the, the business district, um, down next to, um, Advantage and, um. Uh, the chimney place. I believe they might actually be on the other side of the quarter mile, which means that. The property directly to the north of them, which is. Right, you know, across the street from, uh, the hydraulics place. Would then have the availability to put up a pole barn right across the street or right next to. These properties, and I could be wrong, I'm, I may be errant as to, to the distance, but I'm thinking, that's gotta be awful close. I, I would be a little frustrated if I was one of these companies and somebody was able to just, you know, put in one of these pole buildings. You know, rather than. Keeping it the way it is. So I guess my feeling is. I'm a little wary of just making it a quarter mile. I mean, I, I understand, I totally get the idea that we're trying to get businesses that are just starting and get them into. Into new buildings, but. I think we have to be careful about how we do that, and I, and I also think that, you know, when, when we're talking about. You know, the east side. I mean, I know the idea was that, that, you know, we had hoped. Um, in previous lives that, you know, we would be able to, you know, make that frontage road a little bit nicer. But I mean, even just a quarter mile off. You're now talking about the. Golf course. They could put a bunch of pole buildings, you know, a half mile off that section and. You know, do you want, do you want that to happen, um, in that neighborhood, so. Uh, look, the city can do what, what it feels that it needs to, but I'm, I'm, I'm just a little wary of reducing it down to a quarter mile.
So you would, do you think a half a mile would be okay?
I think I would leave it at the, at the current corridor limits.
Which is three quarters?
No, it's half a mile.
Half a mile.
What is that?
We, with some minor exceptions, there are no business or industrial zones outside of. That, that area. It all turns into your multifamily residential, single family and then agricultural, so.
I thought there was a couple on Viking.
There might be a couple anomalies. That corridor is pretty, pretty standard up and down.
Yeah, cause if the golf course is zoned mixed use, then, you know, that's slightly different than the B two and three that we're talking about.
Well, you're also talking about. On the north side of town, you've got the Wyatt's property. Um, which would be within that half mile and extend, or within the quarter mile and extend beyond the half mile, so where anybody. In front of the half mile in that same district would, you know, be allowed to do something, but, you know, for the rest of that.
You might see people subdividing right at the quarter mile line.
I, I'm not making any predictions about what they're gonna do with their property. That's for them to decide. I'm just saying that. You know, that's been, kind of been a commercial district that has been in light industrial, that's been. In holding for, you know, quite a few years. Um, now, if you did do this change, then we would probably be splitting that property into, as to what the. Architectural standards are for that, those properties. That's my only objection to that. Thank you.
Can we get a handle on what is the prime motivating idea to change the standards? In that, or why, why not leave it at a he- half mile? Like what, what is the?
Yeah, so the page seventy-two, actually, the enhanced business security amendment. This amendment to the architectural standards. Ordinance for the city of East Bethel has two primary purposes. The first purpose is to increase the security of commercial industrial buildings. Excuse me, in rural areas by eliminating the requirement for windows on the front. Excuse me, windows on the side and back of new construction. This change will give business owners greater flexibility to design their buildings to meet specific needs and enhance security measures. The second purpose is to create a new section for the B two, B three district, which would allow the city to be more responsive to the needs. Of its diverse businesses by tailoring the building design requirements to suit a unique characteristic and requirements of the, of these districts. This change will enable business to, businesses to develop their properties in a way that is more in line with their needs. While maintaining high architectural standards. That was the, that was provided by Councilman Miller as a. Reason, if you will, for proposing the changes.
Just out of curiosity, have we had any developers that have come in and asked for? Things to this extent, where they, or where they've said, hey, any chance we can get? Something that aligns more with this to validate some of this, or is it just the opinion of?
Um, when you're talking, when you're talking larger developers like Design Earth is using a developer. They call essentially, talk to me and say, what are your standards? And they make a proposal that's close to the standards as possible. I do get calls occasionally from maybe, you know, a contractor who is looking at relocating. And he wants to know if, what, what are the zoning restrictions for a particular parcel of property in some particular location? So then I always provide those, those details to that individual and. More often than not, I hear, okay, so I can't do this, or I can't do that, or I can do this, but I can't do that, or this won't work, or this will work. Most of the time, it's, it, it's not, it doesn't have anything to do with the architectural standards. It has to do with the intent or the. Nature of the business that they wanna put in the location, that doesn't match the zoning code, so. There's a mix, if you will.
Sure, but nobody's directly said, oh, I can't come here because your design standards are X, Y's.
Not while I've worked here.
Okay, great, thank you.
I tend to think that. Keeping some standards is important in some of these districts, especially by Classic, but. Keeping them too tight that small businesses might be prevented from coming in, might. There's some risk to that. If we keep small business, I'll, what will potentially happen is development comes and only big business will come. And then we won't be fostering small business. We'll just get a bunch of corporations coming in and building parking lots, and that's, that's my, my fear. If we keep some of these standards too high. I understand maybe not having painted steel. Cause that, that might not look right, but changing the standard so it's attainable for a small business. Somebody that's under a million dollars a year to come in and buy a commercial property and actually get a commercial site on the freeway or on the highway. Might be something that. We should think about.
On, on that point, we've also had businesses that are home occupations. That we're trying to encourage to leave the home occupation, cause they're just getting too big for that. They're, they're outgrowing the intent of home businesses. And yet, this might restrict their opportunity to find a place if, if it's too much to invest in. A property that would work for them. If, if they're, the standards are just making too expensive to do that.
To me, it seems that, eh, the property along the highway is expensive anyway, and that the. Ten thousand, twenty thousand dollars, whatever it is, that would be additional to. Build a non-pole building, to me, is kinda insignificant, and, and believe me, I mean, this is a pain point for me too, for sure, as a farmer and somebody who's built. A building. I just really do feel that the pole buildings are not appropriate in that quarter mile or half mile. I think Randy's got a good point on the half mile. So whatever that is.
Along the highway, and that, to me, that's a quarter mile. The half mile, I'm not so sure if that. Not so sure, cause I, I don't really know all the impacts, but it just. Quarter mile is along the highway, half mile, it doesn't necessarily, um, impact.
It's just beyond, it's, I mean, it's beyond the sightline, kind of.
So once you get past that half mile, we're outside of the light industrial commercial district, correct? Is that where it starts to change?
In mo- I'll pull up the zoning map again so you can see the, so I just drew in a half mile line, although it's not perfectly straight. It's as the crow flies there, but. You'll see a color change right at that line, and this is our, R one and our, R two, so this is a residential line right here, so. This is the end of your commercial, the end of your light industrial, moves into R two, your multifamily or. Apartment style or townhome, and then you move into the rural residential, the next quarter mile. Where you got your single family homes that are on. Two, three, four acre, ten acre lots, so. You go half a mile, you're. There's no point, you're not touching, you're not changing any of the standards for any of the businesses that exist because they. Can't even build out there anyway.
So, so my thoughts in asking that, um, kinda what you're talking about, we wanna encourage small business or even.
Home occupation.
Right, to, to move into this district. Now, if we, if we keep that standard, the high standard that we have, and I think, yes, there's a place for it. If we keep it to the half mile, that can dissuade the small startups, the home occupations that do wanna move. Whereas if we, if we did allow a margin, you know, and, and, in my opinion, quarter mile seems fair. Seems reasonable and practical for, you know, site and that, that cur- the curb appeal of Highway sixty-five as you're coming through East Bethel. And, you know, if it's, if it's considered maybe eight, you know, for lack of a better term, tiered progression of. You know, yes, we can have this and this half to quarter mile, you know, and that would allow maybe smaller businesses that couldn't afford the. Highway sixty-five front. Where, you know, there's a progression there that's desirable.
But even like here, I, two points with, with that gave it, you know, one, I, I, I will back the E D A unless I think they bring up a very good point though. We do need to be respectful of all current property owners, business or residential, when we're talking about. Doing this, cause it could potentially devalue some of the, some of the surrounding properties. You know, al- albeit again, I'm all to try to help the little guy as well, but. You know, at the same point, again, we are talking about prime real estate. It is higher value to, to begin with, so they're already buying that property and then putting. Something to lesser standards, you know, I, again, just about, well, the E D A, I, I feel that could do that. But also looking at the map, thinking, okay, just from what you can see there, like, you know, the, the green for the mixed use, right, that's. That's about your half mile on each side. So using that and continuing to go up, as you'll, you'll see, you know, the golden areas getting into more of that, the residential areas, we don't have. That much industrial outside of the quarter mile per se, let alone the full half mile. So it's. Again, this is part of where I had my opposition the last time we discussed it, because again, I. I feel we did a lot of, a lot of work and a lot of research on this over the last two, um, comp plans, you know. You know, this is what felt at the time, like it was appropriate for what the direction the city was trying to do in conjunction.
And like, like you were saying, that's, it's not like people have come in and said, oh, I can't meet these architectural standards. It's my, my business just won't fit here.
Fit that need, or fit that, fit that, uh.
Right, so, and I mean, if, if, you know, how, how vast is the difference between, you know, the architectural standards that we're. Currently in place versus what we wanna lessen them to? Is it that significant that it's? You know, you're, you're throwing up ballpark figures, ten, twenty thousand. I mean, for someone coming in, building a building, to foot that, to make it compliant, I think, yeah, isn't. Too big a deal, but, um, yeah, more to your point, Joe, about, you know, small businesses and, uh, home occupations trying to move up. Is that really gonna hinder them, or?
Well, and I think there's more than one way to solve the problem too, right? I mean, it's not that East Bethel isn't without other areas and, you know, other spots that could be. More desirable in the city as well, to, to make property use or other changes or variances or other conditional uses on other properties that aren't. Right in the corridor. Not every contractor needs to be on the highway, so to speak. So there may be lesser valued proper, you know, less cost of property off of Viking, somewhere, you know, in one of the commercial properties along Viking. Um, you know, I think like where Plow World is, where TD Builders used to be. Uh, you know, a little bit farther in, they're still able to do what they need to, uh, you know, there's the other excavation company there, Gordy's Cabinets. So there's other properties that have done that off the highway and still been able to cater to small business.
Would it be appropriate to ask for a clarification from Councilman Miller? Cause I, I'm pretty sure he wasn't talking about pole barns, just. on what, what his intentions are on the post-frame buildings.
Yeah, I mean, and well, here again, we're just going with the information we have to, to try to give the recommendation that they're asking for. Again, in the end, it is our opinion and that's all we're offering.
Yeah, if you guys, if you're
Recommendation.
Or, sorry, right.
Yeah.
If your direction is to have me seek clarification, that's the conclusion you come to, that's the conclusion you come to. Alternatively, you could look at this line by line at the proposed changes and say, we're in favor of, or we're not in favor of. Um, ultimately, that gives some direction. It's not necessarily formal, cause then it's going to look like a dartboard, basically. Unless you're in favor of all of them, then that, you know what I mean, it's going to be, but that's why I proposed what I did, because I thought it was a workable solution to allow some flexibility, yet ke- keep a standard. Sort of a compromise, if you will.
Certainly.
Um, with what EDA's concerns were, and then what I heard from you guys last time, I thought some, some compromise there might, might be a little bit more agreeable, but yeah, ultimately.
Yeah, I know.
Your community, you decide.
Yeah. Eh, for me personally, again, this, I'm, I'm just one voice up here, but, you know, I, I'm all, I'm all for compromise. But at the same point, when I go back to looking at the map and and seeing the distances and where current uses are already zoned. I just don't see even bringing it to the quarter mile is going to move the needle much for what we're discussing based on the intent from what's listed here in the, you know, in the verbiage from, from council members. I just, like I said, I don't see that it accomplishes much, maybe on one or two properties, but not to the scope that we're, we're talking about as a city as a whole.
Do you think we can craft a recommendation?
Shall we look at the rest of the changes? Uh, such as architecturally enhanced pre-cast and cast and placed panel, architectural concrete combination with other permitted materials.
I think we saw that tonight, that they could be very beautiful, right?
Yeah, there is a difference, there is a difference between, um, just cast concrete and then concrete that's adorned or has some features to it. And what you saw from, um, Designing Earth actually meets our current standard because they have design to the concrete.
Yeah.
It's just not a straight up poured panel. There's, 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 um, I'm trying to, I'm grasping for the right language here, but there are features to it.
Yeah.
You know, they've got cornices, or they've got lines cut in, and they've added a window that they combined it with brick. And they've got different depths and height and, you know, much different than, um,
Here's just the poured, black poured.
Wall, flat wall, pass, stand, a stand-up panel. So, I mean, there are there are ways to make a concrete panel a little bit more than a concrete panel too, if you will.
Isn't that covered in the language of architecturally enhanced?
Exactly, that's what they're doing.
Right.
Yes.
So I think that, that works.
I was thinking too, the same thing.
Yeah.
I don't know about the painted steel, because that's a little vague. You could just have steel and then paint it with house paint, and the mirror may not end up looking like something.
I think that's what EDA was talking about when they said ensuring the painted steel is further defined and has design elements uh, that provide an acceptable finished feature. So if, if we do go the route of saying, yeah, that's cool. We need more information, what's that going to look like? Can we set a standard on that, or is it just going to be, uh, like Glenn's saying, paint on a piece of steel?
And it really is very, very vague.
Yeah.
Cause what we were doing ours, um, you know, we couldn't do just flat, um, siding. And, uh, I think it was kind of up, up to the interpretation of the person sitting in Aaron's position.
Yeah.
Right now, right?
Cause one could say corrugated is a design standard.
Yeah.
Right.
For steel and
Or this little line that we have, or you've got
You put a blue stripe down the green wall.
Exactly, we have white.
There's no doubt, we've seen that, uh, on this commission, the difference in interpretation of one code from my predecessors to me and how you read it is, eh, it's sometimes gray and so, um,
I, I'm okay with, for me personally, again, I'm okay with how it's read, other than the painted steel. And, you know, if we scratch that out, I know I'm, I'd be in favor of how it's read, but I just think it opens up too many.
But before giving up on the painted steel, because it could be done well, what if there was somewhat vague language, but it implied design concerns, like even architecturally enhanced, but something like that referring to the painted steel. So that it may be up into interpretation, but the presenter would have to at least address that we're looking for something beyond just, you know, the bottom line sheet way of doing it.
And I think, yeah, like I said, that's exactly what the EDA is saying. I'm, if, if I'm interpreting that correctly.
Yeah, just a little more verbiage so that a person looking at that will know they have to give some design thought to it.
Yeah.
I just don't know how, what you would do with, with steel, I'm getting, I'll play ignorance here, I don't play, I don't work in that environment on a daily basis. So I just, I can't see what you would do with steel beyond what's already been, that, that, that we see on a regular basis, that
Sure.
You know, and again, then, but although we have a definition, what happens when somebody comes in and then tries to sue us? Well, I couldn't build my building and, cause you guys defined this too much or didn't, or didn't. I, I met your code and then it's up to a jury as well for an individual to decide that beyond us.
I could bring in a lot of examples of really beautiful steel in construction, but you know, that's even higher end than anything we've seen out here. But it just, it's how if, if you allow it in there, but have language that implies thought needs to be put into it there, then that gives more flexibility to a designer or a builder, whomever, to at least, if they have an idea that we haven't even thought of, that involves steel. They can at least present it, we have the opportunity to review it.
And it's another level for us to judge it too, like, no, this, this is not designed architectural, it's just sheet metal.
Right.
You know, so I, I think it invites in, but also keeps the fence up high enough to filter out weeds, so to speak.
I didn't, I didn't see the verbiage, but.
I think, you know, where it says, um, A1, that, that first paragraph, I think kind of catches that. And to me, actually, that A1, that, where it says, building design shall exhibit architectural control which seeks to be creative in which best utilizes building line shapes and angles to maximize agricultural integrity. I mean, to me, that's very vague, but it sounds like it's, it's trying to catch what you're concerned about with painted steel.
Yeah.
Or not.
Well.
Uh, looking at the line out for mixed use, limited business, central business, highway business, I, I don't see that line out change in I guess the, the submission.
On page sixty-five.
Yeah, sixty-five, and then comparing it to page seventy-three, seventy-three is the one that was sent to you, right?
Mm-hmm.
I don't see a line out for the mixed use.
Um.
Looks like it was just renumbered, maybe?
Nope, uh, so if you look at, um, A, building design.
Oh, it was moved.
It was moved down to there for some reason. Um, building design requirements, uh, on page seventy-three is listed as number one. It was eliminated from the current code as number two and named number one in the, what was submitted to me. Um, but that also then lines up with what would be A, if it was put in the format of our current code, so.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll comment on that. My feeling is it should go back up into A and, and not be one. My reason for that is that one is just an explanation of what you're trying to do. This is not the actual, number one does not actually state any actual, um, standards that are trying to be
That are enforceable.
Concluded in this section. And so my feeling is, is that this building design shall exhibit architectural control which seeks to be creative in which best utilizes building line shapes and angles to maximize architectural integrity is just a statement of purpose. It's not an actual
Definition, yeah.
piece of standards that were, you know, to make the actual change.
Right.
Yeah, I agree completely, and you said that really well, cause I, to me, it's just like, it's unenforceable, that one. So you're bringing it up to the purpose.
Well, if that's unenforceable, that's all the more reason to give the, um, steel a broader or more architectural definition.
Mm-hmm.
Cause that, that is a control, I mean, or it implies a control anyway.
Mm-hmm. So then down there at E3E, where it says painted steel siding, we just want more specific elaboration, maybe even make an F for it, where they can expand on the steel siding specifically.
Boy, it, it fits in that sentence, but it just needs another word or two, like
Sure. Architecturally enhanced.
Imaginative.
Yeah.
But what is, but again, but what does that mean?
Right, yeah. So, yeah, so then what does it mean for the pre-cast, but?
Well, what it means is that just flat, plain steel or concrete aren't going to work. But something that has some creativity to it would be acceptable.
So are you, are you pushing Tanner to just eliminate the painted steel siding, just because the interpretation is?
I, I think it just, it, it leaves it too vague, and I don't know, and, and again, not, not for lack of trying here, I'm just saying, I, I don't know what language you can use to make that definable enough, or someone's not going to come to go, well, that's not my interpretation. You know what I mean? When it comes to that material. Or what to do with that material. Cause like I said, you could come through and they could very easily make an argument and say, well, again, corrugated is a design standard.
Sure.
You know, it's not flat steel, it's painted, I put a blue line through it and it's got a wave in its texture. Tell me how I'm wrong. So, just again, I'm, I'm playing a little bit of devil's advocate here. It's not that I don't want to say that there aren't nice buildings for that and that they couldn't be done and that it wouldn't be more cost effective. I'm just saying, what's infor- but what's enforceable, right? Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a step back in here, I'll, I'll, I'll use the, the three-letter word CST, right? A lot of people had the impression that CST was just going to come in here and do exactly what they wanted on a piece of property. And that was never the case. The case was, is it was our obligation because they applied and they felt like they may have fit, so we had to allow them to apply and go through the process. And the comment I remember continually making to residents at that time was, let the process happen. We have to let the process happen, we have to let the process happen. And the further we went through the process, the more it made sense and it became more clear that that was not going to be a, an appropriate fit. Again, that's not the exact same scenario here, but I'm using that as an example to say that in the steel siding case, if someone came through and said, okay, we're going to allow this, you know, post-frame building with painted steel siding with a, some sort of definition of architectural standards. And then they're going to come through and they're going to go through that process. Well, if they go through that process and then they feel they have an argument to say, oh, corrugated, painted with a blue stripe.
Yeah.
Meets your definition. And then we say, no, it doesn't, and now we have a bigger issue. And if we can't come to terms, or if it, the deal falls through, you have a property owner who then comes back and says, well, because what you did cost me money and then we're in a court system. You see where I'm going with this?
Yeah.
We have some experience in similar areas, and that's why I, I don't take this stuff so lightly as far as just opening up to change it, just to change or to make it. I'm not saying that there aren't things that can be changed, can be approved either.
Yeah.
I'm just saying when we're doing this, we do need to be very careful with what it is. So any vagueness to it.
Yeah.
But we also don't want to be so defined that they can't do anything either.
Right. So are you open to receiving more verbiage, just, just to look at it?
Eh, eh, yeah, I'll, I'll claim ignorance, and I don't know what language could be, could be there, not saying that I'd be opposed to it. I'd have to see what it is to know what that is, but for me personally, I think if, you know, if we want to make some of these changes, for me, ju- at, and those lines, removing the, the painted steel solves it, for now. And if someone wants to come and try to make an argument with it down the road, then they have that option.
Well, looking at item two, which is unchanged here, painted steel siding is allowed. It's just not, can't be over fifty percent of exterior wall finishes. And so if you look at number two, the only restrictions are galvanized or unfinished steel. And then fifty percent of exterior wall finishes shall be comprised of any combination of at least two of the following. Brick, natural stone, glass, daco. And then the, the new changes, which are, which painted steel siding is included.
Yeah, again, and if that falls within our, our current guidelines and at the fifty percent, then we're not talking about it, you know, three, three sides of a building being it and then just a brick face or, you know what I mean? It's, again, I'm not saying I'm not opposed to having some of it or, you know, or pieces of it. And again, somebody could come in with a multitude of different materials on a, on a building face and it could look very nice. I'm arguing that, I just want to make sure that, again, we're not just opening ourselves up to someone to come in and go, here's a, here's roughly a, you know, to be e- extreme. Here's a four-sided building that's just steel siding and, and here's my giant garage door and I'm going to pull in and I'm going to have to get a door in the back and my guys can burn their stuff out in the back and then they can drive through, load up their trucks and get up, you know what I mean? It's just, you know, we, to me, in the corridor and in the business district as it's been changed and discussed and proposed over the last twenty years. You know, this is where some of that design standard comes in, so we don't have so many variables or so many different buildings that don't fit together.
Yeah, with the residential standard, I built a barn and the rule is you have to have three architectural features on the front. I don't know if that could be put in here somehow, cause I think if we're trying to make sure that it's just not a flat steel building, there's design standards.
Yep.
Because that, I mean, the, the building that was presented tonight, I think there's, you know, I don't know if it's painted steel, but or aluminum face, what?
Uh, they had them, they had them for the glass, but it was glass, brick and concrete panel.
Yeah.
So where are we, dear leader?
Hey, I am, I am one body here. Uh, a- again, eh, I mean, if it's, if it's already in two as far as, you know, with the unfinished steel and then going into three unchanged, then what would be the purpose of having it, or what would be the objection to just scratching it out of E and three E later on, on page sixty-seven and on sixty-five? I mean, would it, if that was the issue, I mean, if it's already in two as the unfinished and subject to three at fifty percent, what would be the purpose of having it in three E and, yeah, uh, A3E and C3E, if I'm correct in that?
So remake, you, you, you proposing removing painted steel siding, cause you don't want that to be the primary feature?
Correct. Cause then it goes back to the design standard to less than fifty percent. Does that make sense?
But beside that, like, are we all, I don't know, I, maybe I'm out of place for asking, but are we all kind of in agreement that those cast and placed panels look good?
Yes, for me.
I think so.
I think the, I think the language change is adorned or, um, unadorned.
Architecturally enhanced pre-cast.
Right, or architecturally enhanced, I'm sorry. I think one of the proposals was unadorned, pre-stressed, upright concrete panels, which
That's a different
in my mind is a flat slab.
Yeah.
I
With, with the terms architectural enhanced.
Which is different architectural enhanced, so I, I'll make sure you know that there's a difference there. What was proposed tonight for, um, Designing Earth is definitely architecturally enhanced.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, like I said, the only issue I had with that portion, like you said, was the, was the painted steel piece of it in, like I said, three E on C and A for that portion of it. Uh, although I'm, I'm in agreeance with Randy on the, on the bringing one up to A.
Me too, for sure.
I think he makes a very valid point with all that. Anybody else have any objection to that piece of it?
No, I'm, I agree with that. Yeah.
So, and we do get it, we should keep going.
Aaron, are you able to get those changes in, or how, how do we make this recommendation, do you think? I mean, are we going to do it all in one or pieces?
Um, can we make the recommendation based on the notes that you're making tonight? If it was agreeable based on what you're hearing or?
If I was making notes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We just get them out in a minute.
That is the, uh, that's the difficulty when you start picking apart line by line and then someone has an opinion about one, and then it's a different opinion, like I never get a formal
Sure, so for, for uniformity sake, uh, just to quickly start back at the beginning.
We go line by line and, yes, would be much more helpful for me.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you want to make the notes, or do you want one of us?
I will make the notes.
Okay. And again, someone please correct me and don't write And again, someone please correct me and don't write it down until we have approval on this. How's, everybody seem in agreeance with how we're, we're working this one? Just cause there is a lot here. So, uh, are we in agreeance on taking out line two? Or number two?
Just gonna unscratch that?
No, I'm, the fact that it is scratched, I'm saying, confirming that we're in agreeance that it is.
Oh, right.
Sorry. Starting on page sixty-five, the way the city currently reads. Anybody have any objections to that being scratched as it says?
It's good.
Okay. Uh, under A, if I interpreted this correctly from this body, we wanna bring one back up into A.
Yep.
I'm seeing a lot of head nodding, so I'm gonna assume that's an approval.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Uh, and then we just reverse the numbers back, two becomes one, three becomes two, correct? Great, and then in three E, is there any major opposition to removing the painted steel siding line or verbiage?
No opposition here.
Minor but not major.
And, and again, my, my argument to that is because it is in the, what is now one and limited into, it still allows for some, it's just not the prior. So.
Scratching it.
I think, yeah, majority on that. Um, going into four, the scratch for the first portion of that sentence. Any opposition?
No.
Uh, same on five, opposition in the scratch of, in the B three districts, minimum twenty percent. Facial facing, public right-of-way shall be glass.
I have a concern about that one.
Please.
Um, generally, I, I kind of agree with it. However, I'm thinking that, you know, when we have a building that is on a corner lot like the, uh, plan that we had this evening from Designing Earth con- con- contracting, that I would prefer that, you know, it was glass on
The front.
Street facing, so it would be two sides rather than just one side.
I would agree with that. That makes good sense.
So would you say shall be exempt from requirements of windows on the sides or back facades for, um, the sides not, or sides not facing a street or somehow put that in there?
Adjacent to a city right-of-way? Cause you have two right-of-ways.
I think that'd be acceptable.
An example?
I can think of examples where you have a street facade that's a main street and you have a side street where the glass on the side street wouldn't really be necessary to keep the integrity and the architectural look that you're looking for. I mean, a corner lot where the intersections are equally trafficked is one thing, but if it's a s- if you've got a main thoroughfare and you want that to be a strong architectural facade, it might not make sense to have to do that on the other street. I, I mean, an example that just popped in my head is in Princeton, this rock shop. Um, and the business, there's, the way the business is set up, they wouldn't wanna have windows on that side and they don't. Except for like one door. But the windows are on the s- main street side. And it, it's not an offensive thing visually to have no windows on that side of the street, cause it's just a side street. So I don't know how that would work in terms of language, but it's not, to me, it's not a given that a corner lot implies you have to have a front-looking facade on ea- each of those. Just depends on the context.
I spoke to Councilman Miller on this and he's worried about obstructed views, so, um, police coverage. Like if a building is built in a kind of rural area, having windows on all sides of the building might be a security risk, somebody can go around the side, be, be hidden and then he could break a window. Or around the back is kind of what he was concerned about with this.
I, I mean, I, I can see that, I mean, it's, obviously that's ideally for, you know, if someone's gonna, you know, be a, you know, be a theft, you're gonna do it where it's not obvious, but I think with, you know, talking about being off the public right-of-way or the main, the main roads there though, that's, you know, I would think that would almost be a deterrent then because it is off the main, you know, off a main thoroughroad. But if you've got a building that's on all three sides, I mean, it's gonna be lint and.
Yeah, so item four, a minimum of thirty percent of the facade facing the public right-of-way shall be glass, so both, both sides facing the street.
There'd be two right-of-ways, you'd have to have thirty percent glass.
And that's, I don't, that's not a change, it's.
Right, that's the existing code.
Yep.
So, if you had, in terms of Designing Earth, you have Ulysses on one side and One Eighty-Seventh Lane on the other, both of those would have to be thirty percent glass because their front, their facade is facing the right, public right-of-way.
And, and again, the difference between the four and the five is, is, well, or was prior to any scratch, was the mixed B one, B two versus a B three. And actually, if you're removing that, then do we need to add B three into the design build standards up back, or back up at A? Am I incorrect in that or am I?
I think you combined B three and industrial. That's what I, that I read earlier.
Because realistically, paragraph five is just only, it is, original intent is only for B three. So if you're scratching B three, then it just becomes a statement about mixed use in B one. And non-residential, right? Am I interpreting that correctly here?
Um, by completely lining out number two, you've eliminated essentially what you're saying. And by the inclusion of it in, uh, mixed use, limited business or non-re- well.
But B three's not listed in there, that's why.
But it is also, but is, that, that's non-residential.
True.
Um.
Yeah.
This inherently becomes the problem when you, I mean, there are people that get paid to write code and.
We're not that.
And it's, uh, it is a long process, I'm, I, it's painful sometimes for sure. And then everybody's interpretation and everybody's personal preference is a little bit different, so getting a committee of seven or five to agree to a certain, it, it's probably not likely to happen.
Yeah.
A hundred percent.
Absolutely.
So, um, yes, I, I, I see what your point is there by, by lining out in the B three district in five, I think, I think as it was included originally was so that that just was
Because it was part of two.
inclusive only to B three, the twenty percent.
Yeah.
Is my opinion of what the current, current code was, that in the B three district, um, a minimum of twenty percent of the facade facing the right-of-way shall be glass. These other ones were thirty percent.
Yeah.
If, if I'm interpreting that correctly. So there may be some back and forth that needs to be cross-referenced to make sure that we're not in one line saying it can happen, then the next line we're saying it can't happen or vice versa. Um, and if you move on through the code, if something in, for instance, C, in light industrial design says one thing, but then you've changed it in the front half, um, but then it con- conflicts with what's in the industrial side, then you gotta rectify that somehow too, so I think it is a very convoluted and long process as, as we've, as we've talked about.
Yeah, like I said, it's not just as easy as like, oh, we're just gonna change this and we're gonna save that and that's part of the, the can of worms that happens when we do this.
No, while speaking to, um, the, the most important part of this is to eliminate the window requirement in the back of the buildings.
Yeah, that's actually been discussed before too.
And I don't have a problem with that, I really don't. I don't know, maybe, maybe what we could do is change your fo- change four from a minimum of thirty percent of the facade facing the public right-of-way shall be glass as the main entrance. And then maybe put it at twenty percent then for, for the other road-facing side of the building? Or do we just wanna eliminate the three sides of the building altogether? I mean, cause it, you know, and it's not just the Designing Earth, I mean, you're, you know, you're also talking about Pat Smallengines, you're talking about, you know, Dollar General and, you know, they've, they're on three sides or two sides at least. Again, I'm, I'm not, I'm not really partial much to either, just the fact that, you know, if you're gonna have something facing public right-of-way, I guess you don't wanna see, you know, the painted steel side building and I, and I realize we're, you know, talking about changing that, but the point being is, you know, you kinda want both sides to look professional. And I think the other thing that, that needs to be considered when you're talking about making these changes is not just about maybe the initial use of a building, but you know, uses that the building may have in the future. So, um, you know, a building that, that may have less architectural standards may be okay for a business that is maybe fixing cars would be entirely different from, you know, a building where you're, you know, wanna go, gonna do medical, while you can't really switch that type of building over in that piece. I, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that, that that should be a deterrent to what you wanna do. I merely point out that, that, you know, that's kind of half the reason for, for kinda going through these. Um, and having the standards in the first place is, is, um, to make these properties useful beyond the life of what maybe they were originally designed for.
Pro- propose here that you combine four and five?
Yep.
Um, four just simply lines out the individual districts saying that thirty percent of the facade of non-residential public right-of-way shall be glass. We wouldn't make these standards apply to anything that's currently existing, so new construction is pretty apparent.
Yep.
If you will. Um, so you could, a minimum of thirty percent of the front-facing facade to the public right-of-way shall be glass and constructed so that all exterior sides are surfaced equivalent to the front of the building and shall be exempt from the requirements of windows on the side or back facades. Cause you're, cause you're encompassing the right-of-way, whether it's on a corner lot or not. You're, you've, you've gotten rid of the twenty percent. You've made them all thirty percent by combining those two lines. You would eliminate the confusion or the addition of the extra line by just making four a little bit more of a conjoined sentence, if you will, to combine the ideas. You'd still get all the main points.
Yep.
You'd get it condensed into one sentence. Um, it eliminates the twenty, thirty percent back and forth conversation.
Yeah.
It's an easier recommendation in my opinion.
That sounds good, I'm just wondering if somebody came in with a valid reason to not have the glass on one of those two sides of a corner lot, can that, can they apply, kinda like a variance, can they present?
Yes.
Okay, so that.
Special request.
Yep.
So that, I think that's good.
And as far as the security purpose, so, you know, again, to Mr. Miller's point vis- vis of your comments, uh, you know, there are other ways to handle the, the windows per se, instead of having a window at ground level versus something turned in at a higher or, again, there's other alternatives to that that would help in the safety factor, if that makes sense, or other types of glass. Just like, there are other options of that as well.
So you guys, you guys would agree then, taking out uh, the beginning, any new building shall be constructed and then just going, a minimum of thirty percent of the front-facing front facade, facade facing the public right-of-way shall be glass, comma, all exterior sides shall be surfaced equivalent to the front of the building, comma, and be exempt from the requirements of windows on sides or back facade?
Yes, for me. I like it. I think that's, sounds good.
Did, did you wrap in six in that? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I mean, conceivably, anything that's currently gonna be built is new construction, I don't know if we need to really call out new construction. Anything non-conforming that's a currently existing wouldn't be new construction.
Yeah.
If something were to burn down,
Then it would.
It could go back up the existing standard it was if it was done within three hundred and sixty-five days.
Sure.
Like, so I, I don't know, I mean, granted, putting a new building in there, whatever, that.
There's also ordinance and law coverage built into commercial insurance policies that would help cover added costs into having to redo your building, right? If you've got something that's from the fifties and, you know, your bird of the ground, you have to rebuild part of your policy. Have, has coverage for ordinance and law where they're required to update their building as a result of.
Cause if there was an existing building that come in and said, hey, we wanna redo the surface of the building, we're not gonna say, okay, it has to be this and it has to be this and it has to be this, cause this is the new standard. Like it, you get what you got right now, if you wanna enhance it.
Different story.
Feel free.
Yeah.
Right? But if it's ground up brand new, this would be the standard.
Yeah. So, moving on to page sixty-six then, B. Uh, adding in the B two and B three, which I believe.
We're just combining the two of those?
Yes, I think the, uh, idea was to s- just scratch the, cause it was duplication.
Yep.
And just put them into one sentence.
And then, I think Tanner, you'd probably appreciate scratching the painted steel siding there again in three E.
Well, are we moving B over to item A? Are we combining B two and B three with item?
Well, I, sorry, I guess that's where I was gonna start with this real quick is, so, cause I see, I don't know, that is still the same, I'm sorry. I misinterpreted something here real quick. Uh, well, because we took B three out of five, right? And it was no longer in number two and not listed at A. And yeah, you got, the, the intent of this was to move it into a whole new subsection here.
Just to make the design requirements in the B two and the B three identical design requirements. Not have a different standard for a B two or a different standard for a B three. The standard is the same for both districts.
Sure.
By in, by combining them into one sentence. And then the listed below one through five are the standards for anything in the B two or B three.
Again, I'd like to move one up into the actual B section. Cause it's the same sentence as what we have.
Yep.
In the previous section under two A, one.
Yep. And then subsequently, the numbers would decrease.
Would change, yep.
And yes, Gabe and I do appreciate, yep, taking on the painted steel siding on three, or two, now two E.
Yep.
And then, I guess, what I don't see is five scratched like six was. Again, do we kinda go back to that same point of anything new is already gonna be there or?
I, I would say so, um, you know, um, existing things are as they are, anything new would be obviously held to the standard that's defined. I don't know if you need to define that anything new from this point forward needs to meet. I mean, that's kind of the intent of having a standard, but.
Yeah. It, it, and again, and this is, again, this is one of the reasons, and I'm not saying that I'm, I'm objecting to having it or not having it, I'm just going back to my point from the last time we talked about a lot of this stuff. And like Aaron said, the, people are paid to write, to write these and their purpose behind that. And again, I, we don't have the, the technical knowledge to know what that intent was at that time and why it's in there and what legally is that they do, so I'm always still hesitant to take some things out, obviously some things, there are some common sense. Always still hesitant to take some things out, obviously some things, there are some common sensible things in here too, so I'm not opposed to that, I'm just. Drawing recognition to it as we look at changing things as a whole in general. Or even, you know, when we're approving variances, et cetera.
If you look at page seventy-four of the packet. This is what was, again, presented to staff. Uh, item six wasn't scratched out in this particular. Wasn't lined out, so therefore went back in on.
B.
It, it may have just been an oversight. If it's eliminated in one, I would assume it, they want it to come out of the other one as well to make it consistent from. One section to the next.
Should we propose that? Eliminate it?
I see item four from the previous section A isn't in, so there's no window requirement. Before it was twenty percent.
If you wanna write something in, we certainly can.
Sure, so you, you're saying that in B here, there is not the same requirement in. You know.
Essentially, the B two and B three would have a different standard than the B one.
Right, but, so, I mean, it's, the, the, the point I'm making is five is essentially pointless here because there are no requirements. For glass.
For windows.
Yeah.
Right, so.
That's how I interpreted.
Right, so you're, you're saying maybe just for the sake of consistency and it has no point, we scratch it? You know, to maybe follow suit with the intent?
Or we.
Or we add it back.
Yeah, or, or we add it back.
So B two would be like Northway Sports and Bolt World and I think the. East side of sixty-five, those are.
I mean, I do still like the idea of having the design standard. Except with the, at least some glass in there, again, we're talking frontage, we're talking, you know, these are businesses trying to show off their business, so.
You can add a sixth and just put a minimum of thirty percent of the front facade facing the public right of way shall be glass, if you want.
I think previously it was twenty.
Right, that was, that was scratched, so do you want it to go back to twenty percent? As a proposal?
So are you saying, yeah, essentially move five from what was A over to B? Without any scratch?
Why? It seemed, what, what do you think? I, I, you know, I think that maybe move in, copying four over here and then keeping twenty percent might be, uh. Reasonable.
So then that would be moving five from A where it was scratched, that, that entire thing without the scratch? And moving that into B, say as a new five and make five six?
Yeah. Yes.
Does that make sense, what I'm describing? And it brings back that design standard and the glass into it?
But then it eliminates the rear and sides requirements.
With the new six? Yeah. But we'd still have the right of way in there, wouldn't we? Sorry, it's, they get, it gets to be a lot.
Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, if you just copy A four.
Yep.
To B, six.
Yes.
And then change it to twenty percent?
Okay.
That's where I was saying it was still five, cause it was the twenty percent.
Right, you put five in there.
Instead of four, I'm saying five, cause it already listed the twenty percent.
Yeah.
I think Aaron can do the numbering now.
Maybe. He's burning up pens over here.
He'll reference the minutes, thank you whoever's typing.
Yeah.
Yeah, Aaron, can you interpret what I mean rather than what I say?
It's a whole nother job.
See.
All right, um, okay, and then scratching three for light industrial, or Aaron, I should let you catch up with notes.
Go for it.
You sure?
Yep.
Okay. Um, as I said, we've got, uh, scratching three for light industrial I and changing to C. Building design requirements for light industrial I district. And then we've got scratching design standards and going with one. Randy, is that a similar intent to bring one up to?
Yeah, it's, it's basically the exact same.
Yep.
Verbiage.
Yep, any, any opposition to that from anyone? Continue doing the format?
So we're just, uh, bringing one up to?
C?
Yep.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, this was the fun one from earlier.
So Sharon, you work in egg, um, will greenhouses be allowed in any of these agricultural properties that are along the highway? That's a commercial business?
I mean, there really are no, um, there's no agricultural property along the highway, so. Yeah, a, a greenhouse or nursery operation would be a commercial business rather, it's really not agricultural.
We do have it as a primary use in one of the zones, I can't remember which one it is. A greenhouse is defined as a, as a permitted use. I think it's the B three.
So won't it require these architectural standards?
Greenhouses are a different animal. Building code is a completely different.
Right.
Standard for a greenhouse than post-frame construction or pole barns or the, like, whole different standard.
And now we're talking about light industrial, so it's different zones.
Well, is a production greenhouse industrial or is it? It's not necessarily retail? If you're producing agricultural products?
I'm just looking at Aaron, cause I'm, I'm wondering what, one, one, what zone he.
Yep, I will.
Seize it in. But to me, it's a commercial thing. It's not really industrial.
Well, he's, well, he's looking that up, um.
There you go.
Thank you.
Garden supplier nursery, nursery yard, is it a B three? I should've just trusted myself, I said B three. So that would be the, uh, on that zoning map, the red ones along sixty-five, some of them bleed a little farther out, but most primarily along sixty-five.
Since we didn't have a full consensus on this, I mean. Quarter mile, leave it at the half mile. It would be easier just to go down the line and take the pick, cause it seemed like we were either in one of those two camps.
Yep.
And do we wanna go a majority or do we find that more fair or?
I am not rigidly rooted in any camp here.
Yeah.
I'm.
Thanks for talking that.
Me too, uh, although I, I guess I'm leaning towards the, the quarter mile rather than half mile, but I think Randy has some good points on half mile.
And, and like Randy, I'm, I, I guess I'd be in the half mile camp here, I just. I might not have the memory of, of all the whys, but, you know, I know there was intent at, at the half mile. For it, I, you know, it, you know, half mile could seem like a lot, at the same point, we are, we are very wide, very long city, we have a lot of area. And some of it is flat, some of it's low, some of it's high, so it's hard to say that. A half mile in on the north end of town where there's a little bit more hillside, you know, up here at two twenty-first versus, which would be more. More obvious to the highway area versus somewhere down Viking where a quarter mile, you're not gonna see. With, with some of the, you know, with some of the foliage and things that we have currently and, you know, some of the other buildings that may impede it, so. I- in an effort not to. Open Pandora's box with it, I'm in the camp of staying at the half mile.
Leaving it as is.
Le- leaving that as is currently.
We haven't tried a third of a mile.
Thank you, Glenn.
Let's not go.
So what do you think?
Well, well, I like the idea of a quarter mile, maybe specify the standard. I don't know if we'd wanna do that here, but. Again, just trying to open up. Possibilities for smaller businesses that can build a million dollar building.
In between quarter mile and a half mile.
Right.
So.
In high rich property.
Do we need to make a, like. For my sake, the light industrial district is what we're exclusively talking about here.
Right, exactly, yep, C, C defines this as the light industrial district. And then the proposal is to completely line out. The distance from highway sixty-five.
Could you bring that up in the map, please?
And then any of these small businesses, are, are they gonna, are they gonna, are they gonna be light industrial startups?
That, that's where I, you said.
Right, right.
Property they're buying.
And same with, uh, you know, home occupations, they're not doing light industrial in their home and trying to move that up.
Here's an example.
I didn't understand, it was just, we were just talking about that in regards to light industrial.
Yep.
Here's a, here's a light industrial zone part section, it's well within quarter of a mile.
What's the cross street right below the, right there?
Two hundred seventeen?
Two seventeen.
Two fifteen, two seventeen?
Just the block north of the Moonshine Whiskey here. That, that's just one, and then if you go a little farther north.
So there's no, there's no light industrial south of there?
Well, the commercial park, classic commercial park. Right here is. And then you'll get this one right over here.
So we have three light industrial zones and one with City Sewer Mar.
We have more than that, actually, if you go farther north, there's light industrial up north, Kemstone and. Here. Uh, this must be the Tom Keerak, Keerak property where the old landfill used to be. This side of sixty-five has light industrial, uh, farm field over here on this side. I know up along here, light industrial. All the way up into Greystone and, like I said, Kemstone up here and, um, Johnson Street. Has some industrial, there's a gymnastics place and always used auto parts and. So I mean, there is some light industrial within the quarter mile, but there is a- also outside of the quarter mile, so.
Yeah, but not as much as you think.
I, I withdraw my concerns about quarter mile versus half mile, if it's just light industrial. Half mile seems good to me. Preserves the reasons I was objecting.
Yeah.
Seeing a majority in this half, and Randy, you were gonna, that posed it, Joe, is it semi-agreeable based on what we've been describing, at least based on, for light industrial purposes?
So you don't wanna remove the standard and you wanna extend it from a quarter mile to half a mile? That's your proposal?
Wait, that's more restrictive?
That widens the, that widens the zone that we've already have.
Unless you.
We already have a quarter mile right here that's proposed to be removed to open it up to the entire. Industrial. And you guys are proposing to restrict it to half a mile? If I'm interpreting everybody's conversation correctly.
Or we can leave it in as it says.
The, the amendment is to actually eliminate any distance from sixty-five.
Yep.
You guys are kicking a quarter, or a half a mile to me to restrict.
Yeah, but based on the conversations, earlier everyone seemed to still in favor of having some restriction there, so. Again, if we, whether it be scratch, extend, or leave, or leave it in.
So right now, as we sit today, without an amendment, it's a quarter mile.
And that's how I like it.
And that's in the light industrial zone only.
So in an effort to make one less change, is that?
I'm, I'm in favor of just letting it be the way it was.
Quarter mile as is currently sits in the light industrial, no change.
So scratch the scr- scratch the scratch.
I'm seeing a majority of that, so. So allow that one to remain as current code states.
As current code states, on the scratch.
Wait, Randy wants to say something, I think.
No, if that's, if that's the way you feel, um, I mean, that's, that's okay. My concern, uh, from the beginning has been that if we're going to allow pole buildings, right? Then I find that to be. A little disturbing that it's only a quarter mile.
That's the next conversation, isn't it? The next line, when we talk about pole buildings.
So, again, if you wanna leave it at a quarter mile, I have no objection, I just, I'm merely pointing out my. Concerns that if you do that. Um, and you're gonna say, okay, well, we're gonna have a different standard. At a little over a quarter mile, and especially in some of these industrial districts that are kind of a hole that you're gonna split in half. That they should all be the same.
We're already doing that, though.
But you're saying it's only good up to a quarter mile, right?
Right, so anything.
So anything beyond the quarter mile that maybe still within the light industrial district would be able to do something different.
Yep. Which, we're getting back to my original proposal.
That's my point. What I, sorry, no, go ahead, I'm done.
So what I'm reading here is that there's standards within a quarter mile, and then after that, there are relaxed standards currently.
Correct.
And so the, the change was meant to.
Allow the relaxed standards to the entire zone.
Yep.
Yeah.
Not, not restrict it to the quarter mile, but allow it everywhere.
Yep, but to Randy's concern, what comes up, as I pointed out, in the next line, if, if we're removing and if. We remove, you know, and pole building materials are not permitted, meaning that they would be permitted. Then that goes back to Randy's point of, if we're going to allow pole buildings going at a quarter mile is where his concern is, as opposed to a half mile, am I correct in that, Randy?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. So that's where that conversation stemmed from, when, when we started talking about the EDA's comments. Does that make sense?
Makes sense to me.
So, with that, then maybe we need to address the next line first. To make sure where we're at on that before we make that decision on what would be. I don't even know, is that two? So, um. I, again, maybe this is easier going down the line or to vote or not, but, um, you know. Inagreant or not agreed to allow or, allow or not allow pole buildings. I, I'm not in favor of the pole building, I just, I can't, I don't, I don't see it.
Yeah, yeah, I would, I would not be recommending that that be stricken.
Yeah.
Okay, leave it in place.
So you guys are for keeping. Uh, two in place, as is.
Yep.
On, not striking and pole building, keeping, uh, the pole buildings not permitted?
Correct, so essentially leaving two and subsequent one on untouched. From the, from the current code.
I get behind that. Wait a second, wait a second, um, can you clarify that for me, please? Cause if, I mean. Again, the current one is the building design shall exhibit architectural control. Number two. Is stricken, right, which is the industrial properties which are located within one thousand three hundred and twenty feet. Of the center line of the right of way of highway sixty-five. So, is what you're saying is we're going to. Re- not strike number two here, which is the industrial properties within thirteen hundred and twenty feet and then. Also not strike the, and the pole building materials.
Correct.
Pretty much.
Just so I'm clear on, on what you're saying.
Absolutely, that's.
Because that removes my objection about wanting to extend it.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
To the half mile.
It would just go back to what the current code is.
Yes.
Prior to the proposed amendment.
Correct.
That's the majority recommendation at this point. I think so.
Yep.
Okay, great. Uh, and then, uh, I guess with. Yeah, one becoming two, two, three, okay, so it's just a num- a numerical on the next line, right? You can sort that.
We're gonna take about, talk about painted steel siding in this one?
I don't think we have to talk about it. I think we're all agreeing on it at this point, having a similar standard throughout.
So item E adds those pre-cast and cast in place, it looks like it's the same as the other ones?
Um, adorned or not adorned is the question. Um, adorned or not adorned is the question. I would say you need to consider. Cause the code talks about in one section having adorned concrete panels and then the next section on, no, architecturally enhanced. And then the other section talks about unadorned. So you just wanna make sure that you're clear on what you're permitting and not permitting by. The exclusion or inclusion of a particular word, if that's your design.
Am I correct then in saying architecturally enhanced?
Precast.
Precast would follow similar design standards to what we have seen earlier tonight.
Yes.
Based on your comments.
Yes.
That is something I personally feel I would be agreeable to in that. Based on what we've seen in a small sample. I don't know about the rest of you, but that's where I'm at with it out.
Yeah.
Of course, the scratched steel siding. Any objections to that?
Agree.
You want to take painted steel siding out?
Yes.
Of that line?
Yes.
So painted steel siding is still permitted, just not over fifty percent? Is that correct?
Just making double checking, going back to them.
I don't see the fifty percent.
It's under B, B three.
B three now to.
Oh, it's just as a, be comprised of any combination of at least two of the following materials.
There is no percentage.
At least fifty percent of all exterior wall finish is compl- oh.
But, but on this one here, on the industrial, on the industrial.
Oh, did it change?
Yeah, it does.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so it's this one here. Just saying it's comprised of any company.
Yeah, there's likely no percentage in the current code. It just has to be made of two different materials or two.
So then.
Non same. So you could do a brick bottom and a stucco top or a, you know.
So then we're saying.
Partially steel.
That's what, exactly. So it's saying that, that, we're saying that they can't have any painted steel siding on it, not an inch, right? If we take that out.
Yes, that would be the case.
Do we wanna do that?
That's a tighter standard than the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
New retail.
No, I don't wanna make a.
Yeah, I would just leave it.
Nope, leave that one in there, leave that one in there. Okay, and then we've got a numerical on the next one. Right?
Yep.
Let's see here, um, and then we come back to the scratch line of the minimum twenty percent of the facade. Did we address that back at the beginning of?
This is specifically light industrial.
Oh, that's right, sorry, they're starting to bleed together.
Yep, understandable. So this is the light industrial. Do you want, uh, the light industrial to have a glass standard on the right away?
Well, I think probably if it's sitting on sixty five.
Yeah.
You know, that's a standard.
Is Johnson Street or Ulysses Street and the back of your business is sixty five, which is the front. If your address is.
Oh, true, true.
Ulysses or Johnson.
Well, well stated. So that would make an argument to leave in.
Right, the facade facing the public right away.
So I'm thinking about the industrial park down in Blaine where they, it's right by across from. Uh, it's kinda by White Castle. All those, that, that industrial district, all they have is doors entering. And then on the back, they have truck access, but there's very few windows in, in those buildings. And so if somebody was to come and do, wanted to do an industrial park.
Are they facing the right away?
Uh, it's, it's off the street, it's.
It, yeah, it's a side street. You don't really see them from six, from sixty five, but they are on a street.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think. Yeah, no, I, I don't know. I, I struggle with that one too, cause again, well, I, I'd hate to see a building like, like you said, off Johnson or Ulysses and. And turned and then the, the face, so do we alter the language? Uh, to somehow address facing. Highway sixty five or what? Is there a, there a happy medium somewhere in there to allow for some of that? Depending on where it's placed, again, or does that pigeonhole somebody too much in there?
Do any screening requirements negate the need for that concern?
I don't think so, if, if, cause again, if the, if the original concern of somebody wanting it, or Miller trying, making the comments of changing it is for security purposes for the glass. And if you have it screened and fenced, that's another layer of security between you and the window.
Every property in our light industrial zone has to have screening.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a requirement, so.
Is twenty percent too high, though? I mean, the building that was presented today was fairly large and they, they're more than twenty percent, but. They have that huge atrium. The bread factory, for example. Country path, are they twenty percent?
No, no.
I think a lot of their trucking doors make up for some of the difference there.
I guess I hadn't looked into that one, that was long before my time, if you will. Um, I could certainly look into it, but. There also might have been exceptions for that as a project too, because of its nature and.
And the type of building.
Type of building and.
They've got trucks going out of both sides, so how, how do you have a window?
Loading dock and what's considered the front and what's considered the back, I, I don't know.
And what type of business it is. I have no objection about striking that.
My only thing is that would be highway sixty five. Again, are we okay with just a flat?
But the front facing or, or the back again?
Well, again, it depends on where, where your reference is and what your address is.
Well, and it doesn't say front right away, it just says.
Right.
Public right away. So a right away is defined as.
It says a facade.
Anything parallel to the property that's. Could be in the backyard or the side yard or the front yard, if you wanna interpret it in any way you want to.
Yep.
You could say front facing facade. That would exclude, I mean, inclu- only include the front, whichever the address is.
Yeah, I guess that would be. I think that would be helpful, I think, at least just for, again, architectural standards of. Otherwise, you could just be driving, I mean, there's plenty of buildings in the Brooklyn Park and their industrial area too that are, you have a front door as it. It's, you know, and depending on how it was built or, you know, sectioned off for their areas, so.
I mean, I can see a, a large, not to interrupt, like designing earth, they're gonna put a fence around the whole side yard in the backyard. You're gonna make them put windows in the construction yard portion? I don't know if that makes sense.
Yeah.
And, and just to consider too that this is light industrial, it's not commercial, retail, anything like that.
Yeah, really, when he was telling me about this, he said some business owners called him and said they were worried about. About building a warehouse and then having rear windows. Uh, one of the businesses on the west side, um. Or the east side of, uh. In, in that, that district that, um, in the water district. Um, he's worried about having windows because right now they have catalytic converters getting stolen, even though there's fences everywhere. And, you know, some of the employees come and go and, you know, once they know what's in the buildings, he's worried that they're gonna be disgruntled or something and maybe come. You know, get their fair share or whatever.
I mean, I can think of a lot of businesses that wouldn't want, an industrial business that wouldn't want windows.
Yeah, I just, I also think about buil- buildings like, uh, you know, was it Rosenbauer, the. Firetruck manufacturing, you're going down thirty five, you know, you can clearly see the back and the side of their building, even though their front faces south. But again, they have at least a percentage of glass and granted, it's at the very top of their building, they're, you know, hor- you know, horizontal. Type panes of glass. Uh, but there's some up there, but it does break it up from what would just be brick or block all the way up too, so, off of a main.
To Glenn's point earlier, would this not be something that can be considered on a per case basis, you know, as, as a?
So in, in terms of the, the thing we saw tonight, that's all conditional use. You could name any condition you want in that building plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, whether that be twenty percent glass or sixty percent glass or ten parking spaces or fifty parking space, like. So a lot of that is, is up to. Those permitted uses. Now, if it's, uh, something that is permitted, for instance, and not a conditional use. They can come in and build without any special permission technically, right? Then they would have to meet that standard because they, they're not getting special permission, if you will. Um, granted, there are. Certain leverages that we can allow for. Try not to, cause then you open this can of worms of, well, you allowed the neighbor to do it, why are you not, you know, so.
The precedent.
Try and find a standard to stick to is the best plan.
So my, my concern about potential variances is, um. Maybe somebody won't even try, cause they have to hire an architect and have this design that they envisioned and then they come, they're just worried that they're gonna get denied. And so rather than presenting and asking, they just don't even try.
Yeah.
I don't move that much money around myself, so I, I don't know what some of these people think, but, you know, I, I think architects probably cost some money. So you, you're saying you wanna keep. Windows on the front facing?
I'd say for, on the front facing, and if there was a way to word it to, you know, and if a, if a side or rear is. You know, within a quarter. Of highway six, you know, facing sixty five to have. You know, that twenty percent or, or something, maybe even less, but just something there to break up the face. Of, you know what I mean? I, I mean, you would think if you were gonna have an industrial building and. You wanted to have it off, off the highway in some sort of recognition, you may wanna dress it up anyway, but.
Mister Chair, I would point out that C. Encompasses year sixty five concern.
Oh.
Once again, the quarter mile shows up. Hence my suggestion, long when we started this conversation, that that might be the dividing line to draw a standard, but.
And we appreciate that, thank you. All right.
I personally would, would strike it just as they've done. I mean, I really can think of some reasons why a company would not wanna have glass. On the front of their building.
Okay.
I don't have a strong enough objection to stand on, so.
Nope, I could be agreeable to it too, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Again, voicing my concern with it, my thoughts.
I think for the most part, like if it was office space and industrial, that might make sense, but like if it's. A manufacturing facility with proprietary information, you don't want anyone looking in your building to see how you're, you're doing stuff. Or your setup or your operations plan.
Can make an argument for ten, but I see what you're saying.
The hard part is to draw that line when they both come in at the same time with an application and say, here's what we want. And you, how do you make one but not the other when this is what it says?
Yeah.
I tend to think that anyone building a premier building is probably gonna add windows on the front.
Right, I mean, they're gonna look at the resale value later on too. Unless they think they're gonna be in business for a hundred years.
So is the general consensus to strike it then?
Yes.
Yeah.
Leave stricken as in here?
Leave four stricken as, as it, as it sits. All right, moving on to five without any other objections on four. Adding and shall be exempt from the requirement of windows inside of the setback.
Well, there's no, there's no requirement anyways.
Yeah.
On windows, I mean, it's not necessary to be there.
So remove, remove the addition then, since it's unnecessary? If we don't have the glass standard?
Well. So all exterior side shall be surfaced equivalent to the front of the building, so if somebody does put in windows, then they're gonna have to put in windows on all sides. Correct?
Potentially, yes.
Yeah. Well, that's the intent of it then, yeah, leave it in. Um, moving on to C, I would put that back in then. Unstrict it. Or unstrike it, sorry. And that way we get their design standards back within the.
So you're proposing to just unstrike C? In ta- in its entirety?
Correct.
As well as one, two.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, whole section.
Except three, leave three stricken. Cause then it matches the earlier one. Then move. Basically copy item five from above and then turn that into four. So you're gonna add the and shall be exempt from requirement windows on the side and back.
Yep.
Facades.
Yes.
So you're saying, yeah, make four, three, and then add what's in five above onto the new three.
Yeah, so four becomes three.
Let's start at the top, leave C. As is.
Unstricken.
Yep.
Except you're gonna take up. Unstricken, you're gonna take up three.
Well, and one, and one and two would also be unstricken, leave one. Leave two, correct.
Strike three.
Okay, you're out.
So maybe it's cause I'm, it's late in the day here, but isn't the same properties not located within the quarter mile? So, so we're not anymore talking about the ones within the quarter mile, we're talking about ones outside of the quarter mile, but we're still applying the same architectural standards?
N- not, it's not as tight as the ones above. So. Different requirements for.
For within the quarter mile versus out.
Pro finishes.
All right.
That's the only thing, really.
So, yeah, so.
And then five becomes three. The five from above will become three down below.
Yes. And then moving on, looks like four D, A, B, C to one, two, three, four, which is formatting. So is five E exemptions, A one, A B two.
Do you wanna motion on that recommendation?
Stay all the way through.
Is that your formal recommendation?
Yeah.
You might wanna make a motion for that.
I think so, oh.
Please.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to, um. Recommend to the city council the, uh, the changes that Aaron has so diligently recorded for us.
For the.
For the, uh, section twenty eight architectural standards.
I will second that.
I have a motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That recommendation will go to city council. You all for your time on that.
Next one's easy.
All right, exterior storage. No one gets nothing, good night. All right.
Oh yeah, that's, that's missing in this bracket, isn't it?
Is section twenty four not in there?
It's on page sixty two.
Sixty two, yes, cause we skipped over.
Yes, yes, I got excited there. Little ahead of myself.
So.
Sixty one and sixty two, sixty three, and sixty four.
Thank you, Tanner.
Okay, so. First item in red here, adding and B three to four.
If I'm understanding it correctly from my conversation. This is where we're combining the I and the B three to have the same exterior storage standards. Uh, if you look over on page sixty three, B three is completely scratched out of section five. Because it's gonna be the same as four. Is the proposal. And then the new five is the B two with some minor changes on sixty four.
If, if I, if I jump straight to the whole, you know, storage twelve feet high. Um, I kinda go back to what Aaron was talking. Um, I kinda go back to what Aaron was talking about with Boat World, you know, he if he wanted to expand but couldn't. And had the option to.
Go up.
Yeah, I mean, this this would prohibit that, that'd have to get a permit, you know, with the current. Ordinance in place.
This would make it less restrictive.
And then, you know, that's that's part of the reason why I asked, um, Designing Earth, like, eh, is this a requirement that you're you're. Expecting is going to hold you back. Granted, there, like he said, there, there's a flow to their resource.
And their exterior storage is just heavy machinery.
Right.
So parked along the outside of their their fencing in that area and then the rest of it is for path in and out. Uh, like he said, they're, they don't carry pallets of materials, whereas instead of boat, you know, boat one, they have pontoon after pontoon.
Yeah.
Stacked up like that.
Well, comparing his operation to the one that's like Hallberg and Stacy, they use elevated pallets for their pontoons and boats. And so I think allowing higher than twelve feet might make it more competitive for him to store boats. But then I think about Northway Sports too, they have.
Similar.
Stacked product in the back as well, and they're out of space right now.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think anyone really had an objection last time to the to the height.
We did.
The one thing I would propose, if you wanted to consider a height to some degree, is we do have. The allowable height for the actual construction of the building, if you will. And so we wouldn't allow a building in the B three zone, in this case, to be over a certain height. Right? So if you wanted to limit the storage to only the height of the building. Then from the front, you wouldn't see the storage in the back because it would be the same height of the building, just a consideration, if you're okay with whatever, I'm I'm good with that too.
Exterior storage cannot exceed the height of the primary building?
Yes.
If you wanted a standard, if you don't want a standard, it doesn't matter, but I'm just thinking if you wanted to consider something. So that people aren't, you know, mounting tires in the back of a thing that are.
The recycle center couldn't couldn't have a, you know, forty to fifty foot mountain behind their building as exterior storage of stacked fridges. No matter how Tetrisy it nicely looked. And no offense to recycling center, they do a great job. I just, I just using that in in terms, again, I get what you're saying with the boat Boat World and get. That makes sense and that can look nice and uniform, but again, when you loosen standards, you also open the door to. Less desirable intent as well.
Yeah, the difficult part in any of these changes is if we if we go with a very loose standard. And then we end up with a tire problem. Um, even if we then amend the ordinance, we can't necessarily fix the tire problem, cause we've already allowed it to happen. So that's a, that is a concern. Um, now granted, there are environmental concerns and things you leverages you could use with a tire company, right? But I'm just hypothetically putting it out there that if. If we reach something that's excessive, it might be hard to reel that back in.
Yeah.
It'll be okay for the next one, but not the one that we've allowed to happen, so. That's why I'm just pitching that out there, that if, you know, a building is a maximum of three stories or thirty feet in height. Maybe you don't wanna let this storage exceed thirty feet in height or three stories, just as a safeguard.
I I like some standard here.
The height of the primary structure or.
Or within X.
Yeah.
Or what a pri- or what a structure could be in that zone, so not that particular one-story building, but maybe.
Three-story building if they wanted to in that zone, that's allowable, so why not let them put storage up to that height? It's allowable by the current zoning standard for the structure.
I like that.
Yeah.
That gives you some, and now our different zones have different heights, so it's different from the light industrial, from the B two, from the B three. They all have a different allowable height.
Yeah, and 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 the purpose behind that would also help direct the proper businesses to the proper zones that they should be buying property in. Even though it might not be the one that they want, as opposed to where we have it, which is why we have the districts that we have. Because that's kind of where we.
And granted, you know, like, uh, in the ordinance for the light industrial, construction yards are exempt from the height standard anyway. So like we're, there there are things, pieces in for specific businesses that may automatically by nature. Violate the code.
Yeah.
So are we just saying then the exterior storage cannot exceed the the allowable height, height of a building, maximum of the building?
I like that.
I think that's just pretty clean.
Yeah.
All right, I see a lot of head nodding for the most part here, Randy.
No. No, uh, if you're gonna do that, you you need to specify, is it the peak, is it the eaves? You need to actually say what the defining height of that building is, because it's gonna be different. For different types of buildings, and even if we're talking about this. If you're saying the height of the building, I'm not so sure how much that's going to help Boat World. I mean, literally, that building is. What, twelve, fifteen feet high?
I don't think he's talking about the specific building, but what it could be.
What it could be in that.
So in the zoning code, just B three, cause I've got it up right there behind you, maximum height measured to the eve. Maximum height of three stories or thirty feet, whate- whichever is less.
So then.
Thirty feet.
Boat World, Boat World could go up thirty feet in their storage. Over their ten to fifteen foot building.
Because that's how high a building could be.
Let me see what zone they're in, just, cause there are some.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to be difficult here.
What you're saying, yes, that is correct. Their twelve to fifteen foot current building, if they were in a zone that allowed thirty feet to the peak.
So then literally they could surround their building with storage that's thirty feet high. That would really obstruct their, but I'm not saying that they would.
Well, with the exception of the thirty feet, that's what he's doing right now, is surrounding it with storage. He's got nowhere to go, he's just putting them everywhere.
Right, no, 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 no.
For the record, they're all sold and just waiting for delivery, I could, I could.
This would at least be orderly.
Yeah.
Yes.
To some degree.
Sure, yep, no, I.
I I don't know, it's it's just one.
To me, I think that's a good compromise between what's being asked of us to review and loosening, but I'm still.
Yeah.
Having some standard to it, that's my personal belief.
You don't want those auto Vana towers?
Oh, yeah.
I'm good.
Storage.
So you'd like to add that in as number two?
Correct.
You wanna consider number two, are you are okay with striking number two?
I would say replacing number two with what we just talked about.
And then, but in just considering, are are we okay with just completely eliminating number two, where we have no. No input on square footage of storage.
Well, I think the last time we talked about this, we were kind of in agreement that we would eliminate that.
No, we weren't in agreement.
Okay.
It's a little foggy.
I mean, I mean, I'm okay if the majority wants to be that way, but I just, I just so that we know, I'm.
Alrighty.
I'm really not a, I'm not a fan of eliminating.
All, all chains.
My reason for this is very simple. There should, there there should be a specification somewhere as to how much exterior sho- uh, you know, storage that you can have. I mean, I don't care if you decide to make it.
Two and a half, one and a half, whatever.
Twenty times, a hundred times the the stor- you know, the your building capacity. There just should be something that says, hey, we're gonna limit what it is that you can do. I mean, again. You know, what if, again, if you were to say, okay, we're not going to have any limit on exterior storage. What would stop somebody? Um, and I realize I'm, this is not in the I district or B three, but if somebody were to purchase, as an example. The, um, golf course, Viking Meadows. And you put on a shack and then you made the entire property storage for used vehicles. Is that something that you're comfortable with? That there's no control, I mean, the reason why we have these in place is. You know, I realize, you know, it's like, okay, well, boy, we're really, you know, putting the onus on on, you know, the person who's. Building their business or property, and I understand that, but there's also something to be said for the person who lives next door to that house. Because if all of a sudden it's all exterior storage and it's not. What I consider to be a clean, neat exterior storage. Um, that's gonna reduce my property value. And if you do this for the out the entire city and it becomes the standard that you're having. Multiple properties with very large exterior storage, now you're not just talking about maybe what's next door. But, you know, your property that may be further out from the city, because the the whole city as a whole. Would have their property values reduced because of what is considered the value of what. Most of the properties that you're talking about, um, having this exterior storage being.
Yeah.
So, um, again, you know, this, the city can do what what it pleases. I just have a hard, I I'm having a really difficult time. Without any coverage, um, protecting the residents who are, would be impacted, who already live here. Who maybe don't want that large exterior storage right next to their house, or maybe just down the block or or something like that.
I think some of the things though is, we're talking about industrial district.
Right, no, I understand.
This one, and the other thing was we were, we saw some aerial photos, I think, last time, but there's so much of it going on already.
I I but I'll agree with Randy and it and it and it backs up some of my other statements earlier too, I think having some standard as opposed to no standard. Goes a long way. Now, again, what that is, again, two X, three X.
Yeah, and if the square, if it's the square footage, I think maybe all of us agree, definitely that's too small.
So maybe.
The square footage of just the building, I agree, that's why I was saying maybe, like, again, I just, not to say to use this, but to think about tonight with. Uh, you know, design designer judging by, you know, aerial and with the that red area, he's gonna need at least. Two and a half X, not, you know, if you don't count his travel way, but just using that outer area, if that's what he's utilizing for exterior storage. He needs at least two X, if it's that whole area, he's gonna need five X. I mean, that's his whole property.
Yeah, so I I do have a question about that, Aaron, I'm sorry, were you?
No, no, I dip, I was, go ahead.
No, I didn't, I just didn't wanna interrupt you, so this property that we just discussed this evening. Um, and he is talking about that red area and, um, from the description that we heard. It's it's more of a parking lot than it is storage. And because he said that he had to leave open, you know, that wide swath going around the building with almost another entrance. Um, on the other side. That why, why can't we define the difference between.
Passageway and storage.
Parking lot or drive-through.
Yeah.
Rather than the actual area that you're using as storage.
Storage of goods versus.
Well, if you're gonna, if you're, if you're gonna park your your large vehicles there, whether it's a, you know, a tractor or bulldozer or whatever. You know, boom, whatever the case may be. That may not be that entire area where he's parking this stuff.
Yep, versus two twenty thousand pallets of mulch bagged.
Right, so I mean, it just seems to me that. Maybe that could be redefined as maybe not all of that is going to be exterior storage, but as.
Operations.
Well, it, but basically as a, as a, you know, a parking lot.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not, you're not using it for permanent storage.
I mean, yeah, so for the sake of putting something into text, you know, uh, in light of that. Um, you know, storage not to exceed or to be equal to, you know, usable space or. Some sort of language in there to make the distinction, but then put the cap on the storage, you know, where here, you could almost say, you know. Storage, um, not to exceed fifty percent of, you know, usable ground, I don't, I don't know how you phrase that. But is that, is that kind of what you're getting at?
Sure, well, I mean, I mean, if we assume. If we assume that, you know, this line here that curves around to the other side. I mean, if we assume that that's all parking lot, right? And then the only exterior storage is kind of below that line or to the, to the south of that line. I mean, now you're only talking, what, maybe two times, maybe two and a half times? The size of the building, rather than five times? Or maybe I'm just totally off base.
I I think Gabriel's idea is good, I mean, you have to define it on how much space there is and then take a percentage of that. So there's some open space left, is what you're saying.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
Well, that's how residential properties are currently rated in per view square footage type, similar, but.
I think the most extreme use that we have in the city right now is, uh, is that you pull our parts? It's probably the most expansive use of exterior storage in town.
They also have a conditional use permit that permits that amount of storage, that's one of those specific cases where they had to come in and ask for that amount.
With everything screened well, and there's thriving business, I mean, I'd go there.
But again, it, but I think what it goes back to is that the spirit of the fact that when they, when they apply under a conditional use, then we. Can allow versus not and make that choice based on what's coming in without having to change anything in the code.
So if we just eliminate it, then it's just a wide open door?
Well, like, and, yes, and so instead of it being a wide open door, to go to Randy's, it point of having some limitation on it, and if we feel it needs to be more than just the building square footage. Let's just say, again, I'm just gonna pick a random, say, two X.
Yeah.
Of the square footage, in these districts, they still have the ability to come and ask for a conditional use permit for more storage, if it makes sense, correct?
They still have to.
Yeah, or that's what I, yeah.
It doesn't matter how much they're asking for.
Yeah.
It's still a requirement that they have a conditional use permit.